Special Agent C to redevelopment agency concurrent meeting hybrid virtual and in person. Thursday, February seventeen, two thousand twenty-two, five P M. Roll call, please.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizona.
Here.
Council and agency member Wizard.
Here.
Council and agency member Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim and Vice Sheriff Pacheco.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Oglesby.
Here.
You do have a quorum.
I thank you so much. I will ask that. I'll ask that city manager, warehouse, leaders and pledge allegiance. And who is giving us the?
Minister Rory Gaines from Emmanuel Church will be providing the invocation.
Thank you so much.
Minister Gaines, you now have the ability to say the invocation.
Okay, thank you guys so much. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, let us bow as we look to our Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for another opportunity to serve you through serving our people and serving our communities. We have said what is done here is pleasing and acceptable to your side and brings joy to your heart as much as we seek for it to bring joy to our neighbors and our friends and families heart. Bless those who are here, protect all of us and our families. Bless us as we come and as we go. We have said whatever we do, we we put you first and we have said you blessed it. What is done here is multiplied. And it's added to in a way that we can add to our city, add to our our community. We seek to continue to serve us. Bless our leaders. Bless those who follow our leaders. Bless those who are all in attendance today in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Next, we'll have the review of the agenda. I do have two. One thing I want to do is a close the memory. In honor of these three following people.
Billy Elders, Dexter Barnett, Jr., and Judy Courier Fletcher.
City manager, you have any additions to agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
City attorney?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Next, we'll go to item number five, which is public comments. Members that are public question to address the city council matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside, but not on this agenda may do so during public comment for up to three minutes. Those that want to make comments on presentations may do it now. Those that may want to make comments on items on the agenda will hold those comments until we do public comment on those items on the agenda. For the benefit of the public, would you please state your name?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bobby Maxwell, and I'm the president of the Seaside Police Activities League. And I wanted to give you a invitation to our end of the basketball season banquet, which is tentatively scheduled for April first at the Embassy Suites. Also, I am on the, I'm a commissioner on the Parks and Rec Commission. And I know recently there has been some problem with the staffing at the Petula Pool. And I think we have enough. Resources to train people to swim and also do the training for the CPR and life to certify them for being lifeguards. And also, I think in the future budget, we need to allocate some more funds so that we can raise the hourly wage for the people that do the lifeguarding because that way I believe that we can retain them instead of them moving on to a better paying and really less responsible position of employment somewhere else. So thank you for your consideration.
Members of the public on Zoom wishing to make public comment, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling in from a phone. Mayor, no members of the public on, sorry, one. Peter Kaiser, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, city council, mayor, citizens of Seaside. This is Peter Kaiser, and I appreciate you having a live prayer from a pastor there. And we do hope the city council follows biblical precepts and the original intent of the Constitution. And I guess this is the time when we're authorized to speak about on comments that will be made on public presentations shortly after. So I think it's time that the fire chief, mayor, and so forth have come around. They've they've watched the news. They've watched the correction of the falsified theories from Mr. Fauci and the CDC. And I hope you understand now that the problems with the this gene therapy sometimes called a vaccine from COVID nineteen is a very dangerous vaccine. There are many people actually dying from it, and there's many people being injured. I still know one military person who had the vaccine. He had serious blood clots and he maybe having to take blood thinners for a long time, and he was delayed in being deployed over to his duty station. And so we have some problems and the military should be accepting these religious exemptions. I believe they've only accepted two out of tens of thousands. So and of course, these masks are unhealthy for healthy people. And it's good to see as more and more people stop wearing these masks and the governor even dropped the mask mandate on yesterday, as I believe, two days ago. And so I'm hoping the city will be dropping any of these mask mandates, especially for healthy people or anyone who's had COVID. I know a doctor who stated that if you've had the COVID flu, you have at least one year of immunity, maybe even longer. So those people don't need masks. They don't need shots and so forth. So let's follow the real science, not the one that's promoted by big pharma and these corporations. And let's get back to prior to twenty twenty to twenty nineteen, normal businesses open, churches open. Children shouldn't be wearing these masks in the school. Sometimes it's even hard for the teacher to see or to hear the children or to breathe. And these children like to, they need ones to see your lips moving, to read your lips. They can't hear too well. So I'm hoping that the fire chief and the mayor will come around on this and follow the real science that we can get back to normal and Seaside around the United States. And also get back to revival and strengthening this country constitutionally. God bless you all.
Thank you for your comments. Pastor Kenneth Murray, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Good evening to the mayor and to city council, city manager and city attorney. And to all public hearers and viewers, Pastor Kenneth Murray, Oceanview Baptist Church. And just on to make a public announcement regarding the faith-based mayor's lunching with Mayor Ian Oglesby will be held at the Old Meyer Center on March the twenty-third. We had to change the date, but it will be held on March the twenty-third at twelve o'clock to one thirty. Then the Laguna Grande Room, and we're asking for a donation of ten dollars each. And hope to see the whole Seaside community there to support our mayor and the faith-based community and all the citizens of Seaside. God bless you and God keep you is our prayer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The caller ending in seven, eight, five, four, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Wes Leath. I just wanted to echo the comments of Peter Kaiser regarding the the pandemic and the the toxicity of the air quotes vaccines, injections, experimental gene therapy. I saw the the banner up on Broadway changed. I thought that was some sort of a concession that the the injections were not safe, not important, not effective. I still see there's other ones downtown of the same old verbiage or whatnot. I see it's one of our stores on Broadway put up a sign that said the shots are safe for five and older. I think there's a lot of studies coming out in other countries that are farther ahead of us and have injected younger people or whatnot. That's not the case. Hopefully, people are realizing that quicker so we can save lives. Hopefully, people see what's going on in Canada and they can support what's going on up there. I don't know. I just had a few things written down here. If people are aware of the Freedom of Information Act request done regarding the trial results from the Emergency Youth Authorization and Pfizer trying to withhold those for seventy-five years. If people don't think that's a little suspect, I don't know what's going to pique their curiosity. And I'd also like to say, you know, if anybody is going to the hospital, I've seen some reports on a protocols in the hospital regarding, you know, if you happen to get a positive test on one of these unreliable tests and what the hospitals are incentivized to do. So they may might want to make themselves aware of what's going on there. And then lastly, I'll say, you know, a lot of people seem very afraid of this virus. I think what people should really be afraid of is the government's reaction to it and and what what they're doing moving forward. So that's all. Thank you for this platform. And again, Peter Kaiser, thank you for your comments. And thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, at this time, no other members of the public have indicated they wish to make public comment.
Public camera remains open.
Alvin Edwards, I just want to thank the council for the work they're doing on Lower Broadway. I want to thank the mayor pro town Franklin and Alicia and former mayor, former council member Daryl Shote for everything they did. I heard Ms. Rucker got a star. I was there. I hope that star goes someplace down there on Broadway on the lower part. But I want to thank you all for that. It's good work you're doing down there in Lower Broadway. I listened to a meeting and 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 the lights are going up and everything, and I think it's going to be a nice looking place. But I want to thank you again for all your hard work that you're doing down there. Thank you.
Mayor, no other members of the public have indicated they wish to make public comments.
Thank you. Public comments closed. Next, we'll go to item number six was Public Agency Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ernesto Altamirano is here to make a presentation on our community-wide events.
Mayor, city council, members of the public and city staff, good evening. My name is Ernesto Altamirano, communications and community engagement specialist for the city. And I will be sharing with you a list of our common events and community notifications. The city council meeting agendas are now available in Spanish. They are available in the meeting agenda section of the city website. Complimentary childcare is available by request only for regularly scheduled city council meetings. To make a childcare reservation, please call the Old Meyer Center at eight three one eight nine nine six eight oh oh. Please note that we require a minimum of forty-eight hours notice. We currently have various commission and committee vacancies. You can, if you're interested, you can apply online or city website or by contacting our city clerk. Since now we can put foot scraps in our green corporate cards, we invite the community to visit us at Seaside City Hall and pick up a free compost bin. As a quick reminder, we want to let them know that we have the C Click Fix app, which is a fast, easy way for the community to submit non-emergency requests, stay updated, and initiate change in the city of Seaside. You can download the C Click Fix app for free on the Apple App Store or on Google Play. The city of Seaside, Community Human Services, Seaside High School, and the Monterey Peninsula Unified School District will be hosting the fifth annual Parent University on Saturday, March twelfth at Seaside High School. Here, the community will be able to learn about the resources and information that's available to them. There will be topics such as mental health, substance use among youth and self-care. This is a free event, but registration is required. Currently, the city of Seaside is hiring for the city manager position. For more information and how to apply, please visit our main city website. The information is on the very top of the stay up to date section of our website. And lastly, I would like to invite the community to follow us on social media for all the latest event updates. They can follow us on Facebook at facebook dot com forward slash seaside C A, on Instagram at city of seaside, and on Twitter at city underscore of underscore seaside. This concludes my presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you. And just not, thank you for the report. I was hoping at the next meeting, we need to clarify the Walk of Fame or Star of Fame. I think there's some misinformation that the applications start March one and maybe at the next meeting in your presentation. Because there's an assumption that it's open. Somebody's already gotten the star. There's a lovely lady.
Oh.
But I think if we can clarify that at the next meeting, because that'll tie into the opening of the applications. Does that make sense for you? And if not, you can ask Ms. Colic and she'll make a point of that. Thank you.
Certainly, Mayor Pro Tim Pacheco. Would you like to comment?
No, next time.
Next time. Okay. Okay. Well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Alvin Edwards, Director of Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. And I'm not speaking for the board. Okay, I'm speaking for Division One, which I represent. I want to make that sure that's clear. First thing, we are doing redistricting in the Water Management District. Division One goes from our city lemons next to Marina, that CSU and B, all the way over to Delray Oaks, a part of Delray Oaks. And Upper Seaside is Division One. We have Fort Or, Division One is on Fort Or, and that's one thing that I'm looking at on this redistricting on trying to correct. Marina Coast is the water service for over there. Cal Am is the water service on this side of the fence. You know, one vote, people getting taxed over there. The district is getting that tax money for that. I'm not representing them because they own Marina Coast. So we're going to try to get that squared away coming up in the redistricting process. I don't know what it's going to take, but it's going to be brought up. Our representative is Susan. I can't pronounce her last night, but Susan is she's our representative, and she gonna be bringing it up. We got two meetings coming up, one in March the seventh and one March seventeenth. And then the board is going to approve the maps in April at his April meeting. So if you want to be involved, the meetings are at five thirty day on Zoom. So as soon as that agenda come out, I'll try to get it to the city clerk so she can post it for the citizens. Is the ones out there on Fort Or, I know it's big for them because they would been talking about this for years. And I've been bringing it up that when they do redistricting, we're going to try to get that corrected if we can. So I'm going to work on it. My next item is on February the twenty-eighth, the water board will be going back to Laughco for reconsideration of their application for their laden laws, laden powers. So we're going to try on doing a reconsideration before we take that next step and hope that they have a change of heart or 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 approve it before we go on to our next step. And finally, I want to thank Councilman Campbell for his vote on the expansion project of Cal Am, want to look at the outfall and stuff and want to hold that up or we can talk and talking is good until we get something on that outfall. My advice to them is let the public pay for that instead of Cal Am. Yeah, I've got a nice rate increase. I know you're going to be talking about it in twenty twenty-four, I think it is. So if any work needs to be done on the outfall for D Sal or something, and D Sal is probably in our future. Let the public take care of that. So that's all I got, Mayor. Any questions?
Are there any questions? No, I just wanted to have a comment, though. We appreciate your leadership at the board and the work you do in the district. And keep us abreast of what's going on with that redistricting because I think it's important for the council to weigh in on how we feel our citizens over there in the Highlands should be represented over there at the Marina Coast Water District. So we're going to send a letter or something. We're going to fight with you to make sure those people are represented over there.
Yes, we've got two more meetings. Like I said, March seventh and March seventeenth. I know you got a council meeting on March seventeenth. So we're going to keep you informed as much as we can. And city manager, she can call over there and talk to the general manager and find out what's going on and what we're going to try to do. But all our meetings are going to be televised, and they are televised. We had our first meeting on February the fourteenth. So that's when I, you know, decided, hey, we need to get that squared away. So we're going to see what we can do.
Yeah, that's what we'll do. We'll ask the city manager to send a letter over there advocating for our Highland residents to make sure they're represented.
Please do. Please do. Thank you again.
Thank you for the information. Next, we'll go to item number seven, presentations update on implementation of the Priority Impact Plastic Pollution Ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Chair of our Environmental Commission, Lacey Reak, is here to make this presentation.
I'm here. Hi.
I'm sorry. That's right. We're doing in person and Zoom, so.
Yep, here I am.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. As mentioned, my name is Lacey Rock, and I'm here to provide an update on the Priority Impact Plastic Pollution Prevention Policy, also known as the PIP four. And I'm here on behalf of the Seaside Environmental Commission. City Council approved the PIP four policy in early August of two thousand twenty-one, and the implementation date for this policy is set to begin March first, so quickly approaching. As a refresher, some of the primary policy elements include prioritizing reusable materials whenever possible and reducing the use to use of single-use bags, cartons, boxes, or containers at the point of sale to customers, including food service ware at restaurants. Single-use accessories, including condiment packages, utensils, and napkins can only be provided when requested by the customer. And when single-use items are essential, they should comply with the Monterey Regional Waste Management District guidelines. Additionally, businesses shall collect litter from their adjacent parking lots and sidewalks daily during operating hours. It addresses balloon pollution by restricting the use of balloons for business and special event promotion, as well as at city parks and events. It also restricts the sale of single and limited-use Styrofoam, which includes cups, plates, as well as beach or fishing coolers. Finally, it limits the use of plastic water bottles at city-sponsored events and in public parks or public lands in the city of Seaside. So after the policy was approved in August and following the necessary procedures for soliciting responses to an RFQ, company was selected to lead and coordinate implementation of the policy. It's important to note that while a significant amount of work is being done prior to policy inaction and will continue just after outreach and awareness of this policy will need to be ongoing. The company that was selected is Environmental Innovations and along with Rethink Disposable and multiple local stakeholders, we began work in late November to plan an implementation strategy. And the strategy includes the following elements. A campaign, so to speak, logo and theme was selected. It is Turn the Tide on Plastic and Lucha, Lucha Contra El Plastico. A website was developed and created. We have kind of a catchier website called plasticfreeseaside.org, which then redirects to a city of seaside page, as well as informational flyers for restaurants and retail businesses, suggestions for alternative materials, for volunteer engagement, and for accepting reusables. Partnerships and collaborations with multiple stakeholders have been underway, including the Plastic Prevention Committee, which is a regional group consisting of waste management districts, local nonprofits, aquariums, et cetera. It also has really benefited from the help and support of city staff. I'd like to particularly thank Ernesto Altamirano and Beth Rocha. And one example of a partnership that we're looking into right now is that we're looking into right now is to work with the Blue Zones Project and do a litter collection around the businesses, while also doing some outreach and sort of awareness raising for the policy. Most of the time when litter collection is done, it's at parks or beaches. So we thought it'd be nice to focus around businesses. A subcommittee has been developed to recruit and lead in training volunteers to help with the retail outreach. And by retail outreach, basically means any non-food service location. The outreach team is going to be receiving training from Rethink Disposables. It's currently scheduled for the end of this month and one-on-one outreach will start in early March. There's all kinds of bits and pieces that haven't been incorporated in this, including just having a list of food service businesses. We're still waiting on a list of all the retail businesses, but they'll be used to do one-on-one, really targeted personal outreach. It's usually tiered, you know, sort of looking at who's already doing, doing these actions, who's willing but just needs a little bit of help and support and who may be unwilling or unable and then helping them accordingly. Food Establishment Outreach Plan is to approach businesses that have water credits regarding reusables, the sort of the first line of effort, and then approaching businesses regarding other avenues of compliance. If they don't have water credits or the ability to have a dishwasher. Finally, but really importantly, we're very conscientious about providing culturally appropriate resources and translation for Spanish speakers. All the key elements will be translated and reviewed by native Spanish speakers. I noticed that SB thirteen eighty-three comes up later on in this agenda. But I wanted to point out one important aspect that we've been considering with regard to the implementation of SB thirteen eighty-three, which requires compost collection both commercially and residentially. The Monterey Regional Waste Management District will not be allowing any compostable service ware products to be included from residences. So this is primarily because they're not able to operate the animal bit digester anymore and are using windrows where some of the compostable materials just don't always break down. And they need to provide an end product that customers will buy. And the customers in our area is primarily agricultural companies. Since we have an existing commercial food scrap collection called Organics to Energy, those will continue to operate and those products in that stream will still be processed. But they do still need to follow the requirements of the Waste Management District, which is that they're BPI certified. So it's a lot of coordination and information gathering. But I'm sure as we move from this sort of planning stages into more direct person-to-person outreach, new challenges will arise. And I'm really deeply grateful for the many people that have jumped in to help with this process. It's really been inspiring to see the many people that are that are participating and supporting. That's the end of my formal remarks, but I'm happy to ask, answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Yeah, I guess one, thank you so much for all your hard work on this. Follow social media a little bit and I've seen a lot of information related to food waste and things of that nature. But I have not seen anything related to plastics or balloons at all. And I'm hoping maybe that I missed it, but the more we can coordinate with the Ernesto, who's doing a really good job in getting the word out on different things. I just hoping that as of March one, we don't get inundated with concerns that they were not aware of it. And so in the reaching out, any maximizing our social media or other forms of promotion or information, I think would be a something with about what thirteen, twelve days to go should really get out there because it's obviously want to make sure that the law or the ordinance is followed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a note of that.
Councilmember Garcia Azol.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Thank you for this wonderful presentation. I just had a quick question for you regarding small businesses, specifically Spanish-speaking businesses. I know you guys have spoken to them before, but what's the reception right currently regarding this ordinance?
I honestly couldn't tell you. We haven't begun the sort of direct outreach. It's all been the planning and the creating of the flyers and building the website and making sure we have a list of businesses and getting guidance from the county health department to get the correct direction and information on reusables. So it's really been a lot of the foundation laying right now. And we hope to move into some of that outreach and specific conversations in the coming weeks. So, you know, March first isn't going to be hit the ground and everything changes. It's going to just be the the rolling ball that continues to grow. And so I'm happy to return and provide another update, you know, three months after the implementation, implementation date. And I guess I'm sure I'll have more comments and feedback and input at that time.
Definitely. So like, let's say come around March, what processes will be in place to ensure that the small businesses have enough time to transition?
Well, everything I just mentioned.
Yeah. But will you guys be actively boots on the ground? Because if I'm not mistaken, you guys reached out to the small businesses before, right?
Yes, absolutely. We haven't done, really since its past, we haven't done any outreach. It's all been focused on getting the RFQ, getting the consultant hired, getting them on board, reaching out to all the other stakeholders, developing the materials. Most of us are working parents, so it's not, I have a lot of time to. Not yet. Plus, we wanted to make sure we were all on the same page. So there's going to be multiple people doing outreach. And it's really important that the people that do the outreach are familiar with the policy, that are trained and that there's a consistent message. And so we wanted to make sure all that messaging was developed before we sent volunteers out to to talk to people. Because we want to set them up for success. You know, we want, we want these to be positive interactions. So.
Okay, perfect. No, no. Yeah, I think that's wonderful. And I think the partnership of Blue Zones would be really essential here in Seaside. Thank you for this presentation.
I want to, I think we need staff to click, okay, Councilman Campbell.
Thank you, Ms. Reek, for the the presentation and all the hard work. I guess we'll get back to that in a second. But so the starting March first is going to be the beginning of an educational campaign. It's not an enforcement campaign or something like that. We're not, we're not starting with an onerous punitive kind of system here. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, correct.
So it's all, it's all about outreach and trying to get people on board at first. And I just want to, okay, great. And then, but I really want to thank you because and that all the hard work that the Environmental Commission has done on this and as well as staff. And I appreciate the the council here for approving this ordinance because, I mean, we're, we're talking about not just cleaning up our city, but but keeping our our home and our world clean. So I really appreciate it and it will benefit not just seaside residents, but everyone, everyone around. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Yeah, I think it would benefit the world. I would like to, you need to have staff come up here, whoever delays on to the environmental, whoever went asked the question about who's doing the enforcement, because it seemed to me that the Lacey was talking about. It couldn't be done because the volunteer members of the Environmental Committee are volunteers, they're residents and their parents. It's not on them to make sure this this thing goes smoothly. It's not on them to be making sure enforcement goes through when we start enforcement. And it's really not on them to do the educational part. As they want to volunteer, they can volunteer, but it's going to be staff that puts out this information, make sure our business people get this information. So is that correct?
Absolutely. That's correct, Mr. Mayor. And our liaison is not on this call right now, so we'll come back to the city council with that information.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank Lacey and with her leadership, it's been about a year, a little bit more, a little bit, a year and a half. Yeah. And so it's finally getting close to being implemented. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to seven B Vaccination Update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Division Chief David Nava is here and he'll make that presentation tonight.
Good evening. Division Chief Dave Nava, fully vaccinated and boosted. I'm here on behalf of Fire Chief Gutierrez to give the update on the vaccines for our community. As of now, we're holding steady eighty-one percent in the community of Seaside vaccination rates. For the county, we went up by one percent, so we're at currently eighty-three percent for the entire county. Next slide. Today, we're holding one of our many upcoming flu and COVID vaccines at the Oldemire Center. It's still going on today till six PM. And then we have another one on pretty much every Thursday for the rest of this month and March, where children five years and older to adults can receive the boosters and, or I'm sorry, the vaccine boosters and flu vaccine. Next slide. And here's some information for the public to order in-home or at-home free COVID tests. And this is through the USPS website. You can find it on our city website and social media. But this is for households to order up to four free tests. Additionally, the city is Salvation Army is hosting free testing six days a week at their location on Contra Costa, Monday through Saturday, eight to eight PM for free COVID testing. I believe that's it.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Okay, I just want to thank you again for all the work you guys have been doing down at the department and the chief for her leadership and just what you guys do every day. You know, we're at eighty-one percent a large part due to you and what you guys are doing down there at the department. So thank you.
Thank you.
Item number C Capital Improvement Program Update.
Thank you. We have our Public Works Director and City Engineer, Nisha Patel, here to make a brief presentation updating us on our capital improvement projects.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Oglesby. I'm Nisha Patel, the City Engineer and Public Works Director. And tonight, as City Manager relayed, I'll be providing an update on the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty-two capital improvement program. And I'm going to share my screen now. So we've completed a few projects since my last update in October. The Oldemire Emergency Generator, we completed the installation in January twenty twenty two. The Oldemire Termite Abatement, that work was completed in late December. The Police Department Vehicle Charging Stations for the Teslas, that construction was completed in October twenty twenty one. We completed the sidewalk shaving of all the zones in the city, zones one through five in January. And the speed survey, the city council reviewed and approved the new speeds in recently and the new speed signs on General Jim Moore were installed in mid-October twenty twenty one. And then next month, staff will bring an item to council to lower the speeds in school zones. So we've started construction on several projects. To start with Highland Otis Park, we're constructing a swing set eighty-eight compliant parking space and pathway and installing benches. And the, excuse me, very sensitive. The estimated construction completion date is April twenty twenty two. The Oldemire Auditorium doors, the estimated construction completion date is June twenty twenty two. We've started work on the Fremont Broadway and Ortiz sewer main upgrades. That project upsizes and reroutes existing sewer mains within Broadway Avenue, crossing Fremont Boulevard, Alhambra Street, Monte Boulevard in Seaside and Ortiz Avenue and Holly Street in San City. And we're estimated to complete that construction in October twenty twenty two. And that project is a very important project to the city because it provides capacity to developments that are upcoming and then future projects beyond that. And an example of that is the Ascent Project. Laguna Grande Park also started construction and that project will construct an accessible merry-go-round in instruments and accessible pathway and water fountain and install benches. And that project's estimated to complete in May twenty twenty two. The fire station upgrades has started and that project will repaint the fire station, will install new doors, construct some electrical and perform termite abatement. And the estimated construction completion is June twenty twenty two. The Broadway lighting, we lit the trees on Lower Broadway and we also dim the lights on the street light poles. And that's again on Lower Broadway and we dim the lights to a warmer temperature. And we're currently in the process of installing lights from street pole to street pole. And that's estimated to complete next week. And Ellis Park, that project technically started construction. You may not see some work going on right now, but the project is partially grant-funded with Prop sixty-eight funds, CDPG funds also, and the project will construct a multi-use synthetic turf sports field, which includes volleyball, basketball, and soccer. It'll install picnic benches, a playground, and grass fields and landscaping. And we're estimated to complete construction on that project in September twenty twenty two. And this shows, she, oh, sorry, that that shows pictures of Highland Otis in construction. So they're moving along very quickly. Today, they installed the Trex Walkway. And, oh my gosh. And then the Fremont Broadway Ortiz Sewer Main Upgrades, this shows potholing work that was constructed on Broadway Avenue just east of Fremont. And that concludes the presentation.
Any questions?
Mayor Protem. Just want to thank you very much for all your hard work on getting things done. I know the Parks and Recreation Commission will be thrilled to hear about Laguna Grande Park being done by May, so that's exciting. Also, the lights on Broadway, we encourage people to drive by because it's about halfway done. It looks terrific on the poles and then, but I always bring this up, Kimball and Wheeler. Weekly, we get phone calls or I get, I'm sure we all get phone calls about Kimball and Wheeler, the status, what's going to happen, what's happening with PG&E and Cal Am and, you know, you know, all those things that impact the finalizing of that. I just think that's people want to know. people want to know. So, you're the answer lady, so we're looking at you. So, that's my question, I guess.
Okay.
Streets.
Yeah, we're finalizing design on that project and I think it's about sixty, no, ninety percent complete and we'll start construction in June, so we still have, you know, to complete the plans and bid them out and, and then start construction.
So, we're assuming that construction will start June, July, July approximately, okay? And it's about a three or four-month process, I would guess, with that limited knowledge to finish it.
Nisha, could you say that again?
Yeah, I don't remember offhand what the amount of construction days.
Okay. Again, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. We will move on to the consent agenda. Consent Agenda eight A approved minutes from January twenty-fourth, February third, two thousand twenty-two, approve of policy checks for two to one million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-five cent. C, approve modifications of the Broadway Walk of Fame ad hoc policy to increase the number of ad hoc community members to a maximum of nine. D, pre-approve a free waiver from the Hindu Temple of Monterey Peninsula for the use of the Laguna Grande Hall for their Jarda prayer meeting event on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. E, approve Mayor's Youth Fund contribution request from Seaside Police Activities League. F, approve the Traffic Advisory Committee's recommendation for a two-hour time limit parking designation in front of ten ninety-four Broadway Avenue. G, adopt the resolution modifying the part-time salary schedule for aquatic personnel and stubs for our salary schedule for fire personnel. H, adopt a resolution authorizing submitter of applications for Cal recycle grant for which the city of Seaside is eligible and approve amendments to existing MOUs for shared costs related to S B one, three, eight, three. Eight I, adopt a resolution authorizing a temporary street closure policy. Eight J, approve proclamation recognizing Irish American Heritage Month for March two thousand twenty-two. K, approve proclamation recognizing Women's History Month for March two thousand twenty-two. Eight L, adopt a resolution authorizing City Manager to execute a municipal advisory agreement with N H A Advisors LLC for Municipal Advisory Services and approve a regulatory disclosure letter regarding the City of Seaside Campus Town Development Project with a not exceed amount of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. That concludes the reading of the consent agenda. Is there any item that someone would like to pull from the dais? Is there any item on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to pull? Bringing it back to the council, what is the will of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
They probably moved a second that we approved the consent agenda. Let's take it out to the public. Public comment is now open.
Members of the public wishing to make public comment on the consent agenda, for those that are in the chamber, please approach the podium. For members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling in from a phone. Mayor, no members of the public have indicated they wish to make public comment on the consent agenda.
Public comment is closed. Bring it back to the dais. Roll call vote.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizona.
Aye.
Council and agency member Wizard.
Aye.
Council and agency member Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim and Vice Chair Pacheco.
Yes.
Mayor and Chair Oglesby.
Aye.
Your motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Business item number nine, nine A, accept the Community Social Service Grant Year One Report. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant City Manager Ashley Colick will make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, City Manager, City Attorney, staff, and community in the chamber and virtually. My name is Ashley Colick. I'm the Assistant City Manager for Seaside Seaside. And I'm here to present a quick year one report on the Community Social Services Grant. So, a little history in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, three hundred and twenty thousand was budgeted to enhance community and social services, services in the realm, but not included, or included in these realms, education, recreation, social work, public health, public safety, mental health, youth development, elder care, community building and restoration, homelessness, and housing advocacy. Eligible applicants for private or public nonprofits, including CBOs and faith-based organizations serving seaside residents. In October of twenty twenty, six organizations were awarded funding, Community Human Services, The Village Project, Community Partnership for Youth, Meals on Wheels, Sun Street Centers, and the Seaside Aquatics Club. As a part of their funding and contracts, all the grantees were asked to submit quarterly reports. Those reports consisted of submitting qualitative data about their special events, significant activities, major accomplishments, and quantitative data information on the number of service hours, the number of participants served, people completing and leaving the program, and other information as needed. Here's just a quick snapshot and I'll kind of go over it briefly. We did collect demographic data on the number of participants, ethnicity, age, and gender, just to kind of establish a baseline for future, as we compare year to year, how well our services are doing and what the grant is up to. We collected demographic data from two thousand six hundred and four participants in this contract year. But I really think that ultimately, the stories lie in the qualitative data. How well did these organizations perform, and who they served, and what the impact was on who they served? So, let's talk about that a little bit. Okay. So, Community Human Services, they received fifty thousand dollars from the City of Seaside to support their Family Services Center. The Family Services Center supports mental health, counseling, and parent education. They also provide families who were dealing with domestic issues, domestic violence issues, and supervision. So, that's, that's the bulk of where their funding went. The Village Project, Village Project received a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and they funded two full-time positions, one therapist and one position in youth violence prevention. And that individual is responsible for visiting all of our middle schools and high schools and providing one-on-one mentorship and leadership, and also working with our youth violence prevention program here with the city. Community Partnership for Youth, they received a hundred thousand dollars in support of M P U S D. They provide a mentor tutor program in the schools at Ord Terrace Highland and M L K Middle School. Meals on Wheels, they received twenty thousand dollars. But this impact is a little bit harder to define, and you have to dig a little bit deeper because while they received twenty thousand dollars and their data shows that they served ninety-seven people, when you dig a little deeper, what you learn is that they made twenty-five thousand deliveries. They did welfare checks on all of those seniors throughout the pandemic year, and it was sixty-three thousand meals that they served with that funding. Sun Street Centers, they received thirty thousand dollars. They provided virtual counseling, DUI classes, youth leadership. They were able to retool their program from in-person to virtual and provide P P E for their staff and all participants if they were going to do in-person training. And then we have the Seaside Aquatics Club, and they were able to provide scholarships for their seaside high swim team. So, essentially, while quantitative data is important, it's a baseline, but it doesn't always tell the full story. Each of these organizations served hundreds of youth, parents, older adults, and teens. Positive service to one individual has a huge impact and a ripple effect on the entire community. And the funding clearly had a huge impact during a time when our community needed it the most. Thank you very much. Let me make my presentation, and with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions? Well, let's take it out to the public. Public comment is now open.
Members of the public wishing to make public comment on this item, in the chamber, please approach the podium. For members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling in from a phone. Mayor, no members of the public have indicated they wish to make public comment on this item.
Okay, okay, thank you. Public comment is closed. Bring it back to the dais. I got a couple, well, what is the, we're just gonna accept it, that's it? No comments, okay. All right, I just got a couple of comments. A great presentation. We were able to jump in with, you know, back in twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, where we were just struggling to find ways to support these organizations. I appreciate Councilmember Campbell figuring out a way to do that. And he led us to, hey, you know, take some money out of reserve. So, we have the program, it's up and running now. And so, this year, I think we did a little bit more, and that report will come later. But I'm just trying to, but I wanted, I spoke to the City Manager about this, and I'm just trying to figure out, we need to figure out a way to get this funding cycle on the fiscal cycle. Because when we issued the money out, I think it was like four or five months into the fiscal cycle. And so, we need to figure out a way to line those two up. So, when we're budgeting our money, we're thinking about this, we're they're not coming six months into the funding cycle. So, I asked the City Manager and staff to look at that. All right, we'll deem that report accepted. Nine B. Review and discuss and provide directions on a community workforce agreement, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will take a stab at this presentation. So, we're gonna start with what is a community workforce agreement. Sometimes you'll hear this referred to as a project labor agreement. So, it's a legally binding pre-hire agreement between a contractor and a local labor organization, and it contains certain provisions, standards for pay and benefits, quotas for local hiring, and things that incorporate the community interests, guarantees of no lockouts or strikes, alternate dispute resolution procedures, and determining worker conditions and hiring through the union referral system, and also apprenticeship programs. So, in California, Public Contract Code Section twenty-five hundred A requires that CWAs or PLAs contain certain provisions. I'm gonna slow down for a second, let the slides catch up with me. There we go. Thank you, Dominique. They have to prohibit discrimination. They have to permit all qualified contractors and subcontractors to bid or be awarded work on the project without regard to whether they are otherwise parties to the collective bargaining agreements, contain certain agreed-upon drug testing protocol, guarantee against work stoppages, strikes, lockouts, and similar disruptions, and provide disputes shall be resolved by a neutral arbitrator. So, there are certain advantages and also disadvantages of the CWAs. The advantages are long-term project stability because of the prevention of the shutdowns caused by labor disputes, the union conflict resolution. There's inclusion for, there's language for inclusion of diversity and safety as far as goals or requirements for inclusion of small businesses, minorities, so on and so forth. And there's provisions for training and apprenticeships. The disadvantages are, there is an increased cost to this. And this slide, it says five to twenty percent. That's something that the former City Manager presented. If you look at this, I've seen different numbers. I've seen seven to twenty percent. We have not done a cost estimate on this. This is just what you can find out there when you do the research. The community workforce agreements are anti-competitive. Although non-union contractors may elect to bid, or they may elect not to bid, I left out a word, because their staff would be required to join the union if the contractor won the bid, or the contractor would not be able to use their own workers if the C W A required hiring through the local hiring hall, even if the workers met the requirements of the C W A with respect to being diverse, local, et cetera. And it could limit training programs because sometimes the non-union contractors may have more efficient job training programs that are job-specific. So, now in the background, so I'm probably gonna take a little bit extra time here. So, September of, September seventeenth, twenty twenty, City Manager Malin brought to the council in a study session an item on this, where he brought the agreement that the local unions brought and asked the council if they had an interest in speaking with the unions about entering into a C W A. At that time, Mr. Malin suggested some goals that should be included in a C W A if the council were interested in joining one. And these are the goals that he articulated. He said that there needs to be a percentage of hours to be worked by seaside residents. He said that the base, he recommended the base project cost be high-six-figure or low-seven-figure. He had some concerns with the scope of applicability. He pointed out some off-site fabrication and transportation work that was in the contract. And he suggested that there be a pilot, this be a pilot program, and he suggested one year and not more than three years. So, based on that, I went back, watched the presentation. This is, and the council did not make any recommended or make any changes to these recommendations. So, the City Attorney and I have been meeting with the unions based on this, taking this as bargaining authority. So, now we'll go to where we are. So, City Attorney Damon and I, like I said, we've been meeting with the unions, and these are the different items that we discussed that have been incorporated into the draft that is in your packet. Twenty-five percent local hiring objective. The city staff would be required to obtain reports from each individual contractor to monitor this. So, this wouldn't come from the unions. This would be something we would need to incorporate in the packet and get the report from the unions to monitor their progress with this objective. The base project cost, the city's last offer, the last place we ended up, was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the base contract. The union was at five hundred thousand. Scope of agreement, the applicability, I talked about those couple of things, and looking at it and listening to the union, we went ahead and left those in. There was some reasonableness with that. And then as far as the term, so we talked about the term, and given the life of a construction contract, one-year trial basis didn't really seem like it was going to be very feasible. So, what we talked about is a three-year trial basis if we were going to do this, and then we would meet and confer on any potential issues that we had, and if there were no issues, we could roll it over for five years. So, here's where we are tonight. Staff needs some direction. As I noted, we are apart on value. If the council still wants to enter into a C W A, we have no less than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the table. The unions are at five hundred thousand. We've agreed on a potential term, the three-year trial, with the five-year rollover, with the meet and confer in the middle. Staff recommends that if we do this, that it would, should not start any earlier than July first, twenty twenty-two, because staff is gonna need to get some things in place in order to manage this project. We also talked to the unions about, we used some different terminology, but basically a no-delay agreement. And, and what I mean by that is, if we put this out to bid and we didn't get anybody to bid on the And, and what I mean by that is if we put this out to bid and we didn't get anybody to bid on the contract, we would want to put it back out again without the CWA component to see if maybe that was the reason why we didn't get any, uh, proposals. And then finally, and this was discussed at the, uh, study session in twenty twenty, we will need to add an administrative staff person to obtain and track the demographics and all of the other aspects of this, um, this agreement. So that is my presentation and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions? Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you for the presentation and thank you for pursuing this, uh, these negotiations. So when you say, uh, if there's no bid on a RFP or RFQ, uh, RP, we want to have no delay, but what if there's just one bid? Do we have to accept it or can we put it back out to bid?
I'm going to defer to the city attorney on that. Yeah, I think I, that depends on the city council's direction. So the intent of this language is that if there's no bids, that we not allow a situation to delay the city from moving forward with its projects. That being said, there are lots of different ways to structure that kind of a clause. In some cases, they've said if you receive less than three bids and you're within, and you're over, all three of those bids are over ten percent of the engineer's estimate, it goes out for rebid without the CWA. So they have a cost and a time component. And that is a provision that Chula Vista Elementary School District, unions that it's in there, um, PLAs, um, accepted by the unions down in that area. But I think it depends on the city council's direction, how that is structured. We are open for direction. I can write it a lot of different ways.
Okay, thank you. So if, if we, um, if for whatever reasons, we, whatever terms we set or goals we set for that first round of bidding, if they're not met, it's possible for us to go out to bid again and perhaps say without a, the CWA agreement.
That would be correct. I will, um, give you a caveat. We can write that kind of language, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the Building Trades Council and the unions will accept that language in the contract. So we do know there are exact examples of other unions that have accepted clauses similar to that, but we don't know that the unions here will accept that type of language.
Okay, uh, but, but to be clear, nobody needs to accept any language, right? We don't need to accept any language. They don't need to accept. There's no obligation here for anybody to accept it.
No, but if you want an agreement, you do need two parties to sign the agreement.
Just checking, I just, I'm trying to figure out where are we already. Okay, um, and then my, my next question is the, um, the cap, uh, which is being debated, the, uh, why, why is the cap, and I don't know who'd be best to answer this, um, why is there a, why is there a cap or why isn't there a minimum? Like, for example, if this is an experimental thing, why don't we start with a, sort of a minimum and maximum, say, anything under a three hundred thousand dollar job means to be CWA. And then that way, that way, if, if there's a five or, or a five to twenty percent increase in cost, it's not nearly as much money as a five or ten, five or twenty percent increase in cost of a, of a multimillion dollar job.
So again, you could set it however you wanted to. You're going to have more projects that are smaller. The other thing is when you get into the larger contracts, what you're going to have is you're going to have multiple trades on those contracts. And you're also going to have more opportunity for delays. For example, we have a sixteen million dollar fire station we're going to build. If you have a project labor agreement or CWA on that for a long-term contract like that, and you have the provision for no, um, labor disputes, it guarantees your project's going to continue. So if somewhere in the middle, there's some issue that comes up, the unions won't be able to strike and you won't have any issues with the long-term contracts. So that's the benefit you get with the PLA. And this is one of the benefits with the PLA and CWA. Again, you can set that dollar threshold wherever you would like to set that dollar threshold.
Okay, thank you. One more question there. So currently, if we did nothing and we, and we did that fire station, what, we're, we're basically at risk of, of, uh, labor dispute. If we did nothing, is that what you're saying?
What I'm seeing is one of the benefits with the project labor agreement is that agreement that they're not going to strike. Um, one of the things that you'll see when you, when there are big projects like that is sometimes the agencies will enter into a PLA just for that project.
Okay, um, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Any, any other questions? Mayor Boettman.
Excuse me, I want to pick some marks. I have, I have numerous questions. Cause I think this is extremely important, not only to, um, the unions and the non-unions, the residents and the city of Seaside as a whole. So therefore the, the questions. So basically, thank you for the report, uh, and all the work that goes into preparing this item. Everyone has, we all need to look out and we all know to look out for what's the best interests of seaside. Uh, this is a big issue that impacts our residents and CCI moving forward as quickly as possible. Uh, and a lot of the projects that we do, um, my questions are pointed, um, I think. And it's based on the information that we received. So we have to go over, to be fair, and, and in the process, and just for a point of this, the staff is aware of these questions in advance. So some of them are a little bit wordy and I apologize, but, uh, I think it's important uh, for all of us and for the residents that hopefully are lis- listening in the space of computers. So in the report, there are no Peninsular Cities nor Salinas that has an agreement of this nature other than Waterville, according to what I read. Can you explain or why that is and or can somebody explain why that is and why aren't other cities jumping on this bandwagon as such?
So the short answer is, I don't know, you know, that would need to be, maybe the unions can speak to conversations they've had with other agencies. Um, and it could just be that the councils haven't wanted to do that, or maybe they haven't been approached.
Okay. And then what are the last four contracts at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or above? How many per bid? Who were they, say, who were they per bid and were they union or non-union? Does that make, I know you heard the question before, so.
So what I can tell you is, um, the last one, cause so we don't have like a great system for tracking this. So we had to pull these things together. We have a two-point-three million dollar bid that went to Monterey Peninsula Engineering, and this is for that, um, sewer project that Nisha spoke about. Um, they are not union. Tecker Construction has an eight-point-five million dollar, um, contract for the pavement, pavement rehab. I understand that they are union. Um, and then we had three-point-three to KJ Wood Construction. I don't know if they're union or not. And then MP, MPE also had a one-point-three million dollar one back in twenty twenty for the sewer main replacement project on Canyon Del Ray.
In, in my observation, and, and this is by memory, so how, do you know how many, normally it appears there were very limited bids. Do you know if we have two, three, four, five, twelve bids on these things or do you know anything of that nature? Or is it, am I wrong or am I right or any of them close to?
What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the city engineer to pop on because she's the one that takes the bids and have her kind of give you a perspective of what those have been looking like, because I know it's been all over the place.
Exactly. Thank you.
Councilmember Pacheco. Um, I think we've been seeing around four or five bids. Um, some of these more unique projects like with trailer modification. Um, we only got one bid, but that's kind of rare. Um, yeah.
Are they normally a combination of union versus non-union? Is it, I'm making this up, three and one, two and four, whatever it be, or is it all union, all non-union, or is it a mixed blessing of both?
I'm, I'm just getting, um, familiar with the contractors that bid around here, but, um, usually, um, it, I mean, I've noticed these three, um, non-union contractors that typically bid on our projects. Yeah, an example like MPE and Don Chapin and, um, uh, staff told me about another one, but I just don't remember their names.
So if I hear you correctly, and please clarify, often non-union people bid on our projects and from what I hear, they have gotten the bids in the past. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, this is a long-winded question, but, um, again, um, you've heard the question, I hope. Our goal is to move seaside as a number one priority effectively and efficiently. The city of Seaside often used Don Chapin and Monterey Peninsula airing, engineering as we heard. And I believe they are often the only bidders, sometimes at least what I remember, and both are non-union. And I think Mr. Campbell, um, commented directly or indirectly, if we more move forward with this document, what happens if we receive no bids? Is there an escape hatch in the proposal? That if we do not get any of the bids on the first attempt, can we open it up to non-union bidders? And if not, can we add that? And then, you know, I'm very, um, as you probably know, very, um, pesty about getting things done. Uh, I push as hard as I can. And is there a delay? Cause sometimes it feels like everything, you know, is in slow motion. Is there a delay? And is there a, a week delay, six-week delays to go out of, to go out and get if we don't get any bid? And then also the ten percent mentioned, was mentioned earlier that ties into this question too, I guess.
Okay, so let me, um, let me pull the pieces of that together.
Okay.
So we talked about the possibility of this with the unions and they have assured us that, um, when we go out to bid, they will be our biggest fans with, with getting people to bid on these contracts. The council could send us back to the unions to negotiate some sort of no delay or escape hatch or however you want to call that provision. And we could sit down and talk with them about that to see if we could come up with something that's agreeable. And again, as the city attorney pointed out, it would need to also be, it would need to be agreeable to both parties. Don't remember what the other part you asked about the ten percent, the, the ten percent's just.
Ties into all that, yeah. Um, how much a delay? So we don't get, I mean, uh, the, the unions that are here are very, responsible, reliable and all that, but three to five years from now, we all go in different directions as well as the council. You know, and no one will remember what, who did what and why they did it. Uh, so basically, but assuming that we don't know and we don't know five years from now, how much of a delay it is, because you could tell us now be, uh, they're going to be our number one supporter, they're always going to provide that, but five years from now, three years from now, life changes.
So how much of a delay, it would double the time period for the bid and maybe a little bit more. So if the bid went out for sixty days and we didn't get anybody, then staff would, it would close, staff would regroup, put it back together, put it out for another sixty days. So that's, that's what you would be looking at is doubling the amount of time you have something out for bid.
In the report, it says, in my interpretation, it would cost the city five to twenty percent more per project. And then I believe you said it would cost another full-time staff person. And I'm threw out a number because I know that would be a tough job, time you had all the benefits, all the things associated with that. Just a projection, but maybe up to two hundred thousand dollar time you get done with all the benefits, all the perks and all the perks and all that kinds of things associated with that. So in seeing that, and I think you might have commented, what are the potential benefits to the residents in seaside moving this forward? A- as far as the additional cost potentially to anything, I guess.
Sure. So let me reiterate on the, the cost estimate. So those are the cost estimates when you look at the benefits of a CWA or the, the disadvantages of CWA. We have not done any, uh, calculations to see what that cost would be. As far as what the advantages would potentially be, it were the things that I went through earlier, you know, long-term project stability, union conflict resolution, some of the diversity, safety, those kind of things.
Okay. To me, and this is just probably, this is only to me, uh, because we all have different philosophies and thoughts. But this provision or this concept, um, is about jobs and training and the unions do. Man, if they do an amazing, they should run the school system. That's how good a job they do as far as training people. They are, they are just doing number one job. But this is about job, especially locals and preferably for me, especially for seaside. As a could we could, if they bought into it, which who knows, include non-union ability to bid on jobs if they hire fifty percent local and twenty percent must be seaside residents. And I'm getting, I'm just trying to priority for me is seaside, priority for me is jobs, priority for me is people getting jobs that live in seaside. So I'm just asking that question, if, if everybody would agree.
So with the council's direction, we can go back to the unions to try to negotiate those provisions.
And again, fifty percent would just, you know, that's all just a concept. Okay, um, and you tied on this, but it's something I know someone to ask it anyway. Uh, and you can, uh, when the city hires, oh wait, there's another question that's really important. I saw a letter today, um, about legal action or in this agreement. And if we move forward to this, have we researched the legal action as it relates pertaining to the city? Cause we don't, I mean, that's something that's pretty serious.
Yes, I was, I, I just saw that, um, letter today. And I have not been able to fully research that particular issue as it relates to this particular agreement.
And that just to be aggressive in my comment question here, and I apologize. How important is, is it that we research the information as this moves forward or not, you know, whatever this does?
Well, quite frankly, I would like the opportunity to, um, give it some serious attention and, and thought and legally brief it and discuss it with council in closed session. So that from a legal perspective, we want any agreements that we enter into as the city to be as legally defensible as possible to minimize our litigation risk.
And I apologize for getting, um, so when the city hires an employee, there's a probation period to ensure the program is working. In the report, it says, I think it's second or third paragraph, an evaluation period of one year. But then I don't, I didn't see that in the document. I think it was like in the third paragraph, the discussion of, uh, probation period or a review period or however you want to title it.
So I think what you're asking about is the one year, uh, that Mr. Malin, that was mentioned in the staff report. Right. So what we have is we have a three-year trial basis. So basically we have a three-year period. And as I explained, um, with the life of a construction project, having a little bit longer term made more sense than just one year. You could have one year and not put anything out to bid or only put one thing out to bid.
And then you know, I believe it's important to evaluate programs and projects and things and, and to see if agreements work or don't work. And I know in some, I believe in some instances, there is a program or a system set up where we don't like you and you don't like us. And, and one party says, we don't want to do business with you, with, with, you know, thirty, forty-five days notice. Uh, I think I've seen that in some of the city documents or cities, um, information. Is there any kind of language related to that? Because the unions or, or non-unions or somebody might not like how we're dealing with them and they can say, well, this is our waste of time. how we're dealing with them and they can say, well, this is our waste of time, we don't want to deal with you. Or the city saying, we're not getting in contract script, then we're not at the right price and we're not happy. So is there any kind of whatever process in that?
No.
Okay, that's a fair answer. Affordable housing is a priority to Seaside and to this council, I believe, in the peninsula. From what I, little I know, there's a, a small slice, a wiggle room in profiting companies or developers wanting to do affordable housing. Staff reported there is a 5% to 20% increase in cost with this type, this type of program, not including a full-time staff person. Possibly, you know, I'm wondering, does it possibly make affordable housing not affordable when we add those numbers? And it's just a wonder. Do you have any thoughts regarding this activity of development? And what can we do to encourage affordable housing with potential additional costs? And is there any kind of negotiation in that concept? I'm just asking the question.
I will take a stab at that. So Mayor Protem, that's a very good question about the impact of this particular agreement on affordable housing. As this agreement is structured, it applies only to our public works projects in our capital improvement program. So right now, the city is not actually building an affordable housing project. So from a direct translation, there's not an impact on the, on the affordable housing. However, by increasing the costs that you might pay for a capital improvement program project, so you're, you might be paying more for your capital improvement projects. That means you have fewer dollars on the other side that you might be able to apply toward an affordable housing project. So if, I don't know if that makes sense.
Just, I think it does, just one follow-up on that. And because this is all fresh and, and interesting. So let's assume we have property on Hillby that we want to put affordable housing on. And we're the lead agency, whether, do they have to, do we have to? In this game, or is it the developer that we hired, do they have to follow the same process?
That is a really complicated answer, and I will try to make it as simple as possible. If the city develops the affordable housing project, that would be a public works project. There would be public money in the project and it would be subject to the CWA. Okay? If the city sold the property to a surplus lands act developer, a nonprofit housing developer transferred the property to somebody else, that might be a different answer. And it might not apply. The CWA might not apply depending on how that transaction and that housing was developed.
I think I got that. Very good explanation. My last one. You know, I think we all believe that we need to put Seaside first and our, and our residents first. And I know both the city manager and the city attorney, and I imagine other employees have thought about this nonstop for the last two to four weeks at least. In your, and you are the professionals, we count on you to provide guidance, good guidance for this city to move it forward. Do you have any recommendations on this whole process other than what you stated? Any creative ideas to ensure that our residents and our, have jobs, our residents can move Seaside forward, our residents are priority that are outside the scope of what you just gave in your report?
So deciding whether or not to enter into the community workforce agreement is a policy decision. So if the council makes that policy decision, these, those were the recommendations that staff would recommend.
So, okay, so just basically with you and 750, that three years, the escape clause extent. Okay, and no creative powerhouse ideas, how we can make this all work. Okay, perfect. Well, thank you very much and thank you, Mary, for your indulgence.
No problem, thank you so much. Anyone else for the dice? We will take it out to public comment. Want to make sure I didn't miss any. Public comment will be open for three minutes. When the time is up and the real light is on, stop talking. And be respectful of the person behind you. Thank you so much, public comment is open.
Members of the public wishing to make public comment on this item in the chamber, please line up at the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling in from a phone.
Yeah, you don't, you don't need to line up. You can just stand your seat until we'll make sure no one is missed. But we appreciate your comments, City Clerk.
So worthy mayor and council members, staff, thank you for everything you do for the city of Seaside. Manny Panero, I'm with the Monterey-St. Chris County Building Construction Trades Council CEO. Thank you again this evening. Just to let you know for the record, KJ Woods is a signatory contractor. And right now, they are doing work in the city of Watsonville under PLA. We would hope that the council would consider adopting this. One of the things about the advantages, our apprenticeship programs are accredited by the state of California. And they help communities. You make a livable wage and a good benefit. Next week, I'll be 60 years old. I've been retired five years with a great union pension. It's a defined benefit plan. In a real short version, you have a 401K has 500,000, you used to live around 50,000, which you can't in this area. You deplete it in less than 10 years. Defined benefit plan goes for the rest of your life and it's set up for your spouse. This would be ideal for your community. And if you support it, thank you, have a great day.
Kevin Dayton, Government Affairs Liaison for the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. We do have a letter that you can read at your leisure later. This is a fairly complicated topic and we wanted to be very diplomatic in analyzing it and talking about it. So it took some time to put this together. But I, I think that the initial sentiment is, when I started as Government Affairs Liaison for the Chamber in 2016, people would say Seaside is anti-business. And I think it's changed and we've been really excited to see things like Campus Town. I remember speaking here just before coronavirus started about Campus Town. And Ascent, boy, I'd love to see Ascend start. You got now the Enclave. Good things are happening in Seaside and I said, they're moving forward here. They got the Broadway project going. And all of a sudden, to see this come up, it's pretty disappointing. And one thing that's, you just had a presentation about your capital improvements program. And it should have been, you know, these projects are failing, the workers are exploited, nobody's local here. And that wasn't it at all. It was, it was a great presentation. It said Seaside's doing things right. So all of a sudden, you're changing things here. It's very disappointing. I was, you know, I, I was actually at that city of Watsonville meeting back in 2014 where they passed it. And, you know, there was somebody running for assembly at the time there. Her name was Karina Cervantes Aleo. And you know what? They were poorly served by that. They had good bidding going on and now they have poor bidding going on in Watsonville. This is going to change things, you're going to lose bidders. I looked at all those bidders for the past few years, it's on your website. You have plenty of chamber contractors there and lots of them are local. There's just no reason for this. I'll also point out one thing is I spoke at that study session in September 2020. And it says here in the minutes, the council discussed the purpose and benefits of this type of agreement as well as some impacts. There was no action taken on the item, that was a study session item. I think that the interpretation that that was a directive to negotiate is incorrect. I think that would be a Brown Act violation. So you may want, you know what, you may want to take a look at that sort of thing. But the Chamber of Commerce opposes this, it's not necessary. You've got great projects going on and they're getting done well by local contractors. There's no reason for this fundamental change in bidding procedures right now. Thank you.
Mayor Oglesby and members of the Seaside City Council, I'm Nicole Garing. I'm the Vice President of Government and Community Affairs for the Associated Builders and Contractors Northern California Chapter. We've got members all throughout Monterey County, building their communities, building in this community here. We also operate a state and federally approved, also certified by the state apprenticeship programs that are training people in this area. And people that have been trained in pre-apprenticeship like Eileen or Gutierrez or Selena and, and such who have fell on hard times, whoever giving opportunities to work would now not be able to work based on the language that I read in, in the document that doesn't allow for, it allows for, for a referral from everybody from the union hiring hall. So other people who are being trained in great programs would not have an opportunity to work in this city. I know that I was involved with this process. I, I was part of that first study session meeting. And I spoke and, and I recall, I went back to my records from that meeting and, and there was no action taken at that meeting. So I don't understand, you know, how it was initiated to have these meetings with the unions. There was no vote or direction to negotiate. There was also a, a meeting we had with city staff that was supposed to have both stakeholders at the, at the meeting. And, and myself and contractors were the only ones at that meeting. Then we did a, a pre-apprenticeship presentation in December of that same year to the city and, and made some offerings and never heard back. And so, and we also provided information on inclusive project labor agreements to the city. And, and we, and had some conversations. And, you know, the document that I see here is, is it looks to me like a boilerplate project labor agreement that doesn't have any, any of the suggestions that we made. I mean, one simple suggestion would be to just allow all workers in the city of Seaside and all apprentices from the city of Seaside be able to, to be part of and work on the project. So I know there's a lot of questions about who can bid. Contractors can, can all bid, but the problem with the document is, is the workforce is excluded. So I'd like for you to take a look at those things. I mean, if you look at the Watsonville bid results, there are several bids there that we surveyed that are all over the estimate and were rebid. So just take a look at that. It is going to cause delay and they're, and you are going to get one or, or in some cases, no bids. And you're going to have bids over the estimate, so you're going to have to reject them. So I would urge you to, to stay the course as is and continue to operate how you are. Thank you.
How you doing, Mr. Mayor? Staff, my name is Brandon Pryor. I am a Seaside resident, 40 years. My mother and father, Seaside resident.
My grandfather was stationed in Fort Ord, this is my family's hometown. I currently work for Monterey Peninsula Engineering. We are a non-union. I've been there about five years now. And if you're not familiar with them, we have done the Seaside High Project, the bottom of Broadway, all really good projects. I have health insurance, 401K. I started out as a laborer there. Worked my way up to lead pipe fitter. I have a company truck. It's a good company. This CWA, if it goes through, will exclude me from working in the city of Seaside, my town, my hometown. So I'm against it. And I hope you guys are too. Thank you.
Good evening, council, my name is Casey Van Newell. I'm the Business Representative for the sheet metal workers local 104. And I represent the members in Santa Cruz, Monterey and San Benito County. Tonight, I've heard a lot of false things according to this PLA. Project labor agreements in the framework is designed to reduce the project costs. Implementing productivity, ensuring practicality of labor costs and, and availability, reducing project delays by banning strikes and outlaws and contracting and pushing forward for the dates of completion. Streamlining work rules and work schedules, improving costs, crosscraft coordination and meet specific project timelines. Through the use of local hiring halls promoting hiring and retention of workers who have greater investment in the project's successful completion. It has been argued that PLAs could increase the costs by raising the wage rates paid to the workforce. However, in California, public projects on which PLAs might be applied are typically subject to state prevailing wage. So they're already paying wages that are the same as unions. So how could these costs be greater if they're under the same rules under public work? Rather, a PLA provides enhanced enforcement of the existing wage rates through strict project level oversight, making it difficult for contractors and subcontractors to employ such illegal and widespread practices as misclassifying employees as independent contractors, bypassing safety regulations and requiring employees to work off the books. That's why the non-union comes in underbid. Because they know they can cheat, there's no one regulating public work projects. It's all self-reporting. There has been case studies, let's see here, between 1996 and 2002. And they found no discernible difference in the construction cost between projects with or without PLAs. Several California jurisdictions enacted PLAs with community workforce provisions have undertaken evaluations in the impact and costs. The city of Los Angeles tracked winning bids relative to the engineer's estimate before and after a PLA policy with community workforce provisions implemented for its system. The analysis showed that the PLA implemented, that the bids for the most part started to trend closer and lower to the engineer's estimate, implying that the PLA policy reduced construction costs. And I ask if you, you say you want to know how many Seaside city residents are working in your community, right? You want to know what ethnicity is working under there? Are you allowing people from disadvantaged communities to work on these projects? You haven't currently done that on these projects. So let's start doing it now with this community workforce. Please implement this community workforce because it is greatly going to enhance this community. You're going to provide workers with actual healthcare with a deductible that is actually deemable that a family can afford. Other healthcare plans have deductibles of upwards of $5,000 to $10,000 for a family. That is outrageous to call that good healthcare. Our deductible is $600 for a family and it covers the entire family. Imagine taking your kid to your hospital, knowing you're going to have to pay $5,000 to $10,000 out of pocket. Having only a 401K plan. That means your retirement is going to go up and down, up and down, up and down. And you have no idea where you're going to get on the other end of this. We have defined benefit plans. So you can plan for the future and know what's going to happen. We have dignified retirement. My union personally has three different retirement policies. We have a NorCal pension, we have a national pension. And then you know what we call our 401K? A supplemental pension. And I also want to ask too, is if PLAs cost so much money, right? Then why did the Rancho San Juan High School come under?
Your time is up, thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk, throw something at me if I, okay.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Michael Sandoval. I'm an apprentice in the sheet metal worker union 104. I just wanted to ask, you guys know what an apprenticeship is? Apprenticeship is both a full-time job and an intensive educational program. California-registered apprentice programs are a form of post-secondary education that combines classroom and hands-on training with paid-on-the-job training. Apprenticeship programs require intensive, long-term commitment from the students. The training period is three to five years and typically requires successful completion of a curriculum of 400 to 800 classroom hours, which is free of charge. Combined with 3,000, 8,000 hours of paid-on-the-job training, where apprentices like myself will work side by side with experienced workers to learn all the skills required of the trade. Please vote yes for the CWA so my apprenticeship and others have the opportunity to grow while providing new career opportunities for Seaside residents. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Oglesby and Seaside City Council. My name is Indiana Ortega and I am the Apprenticeship Engagement Officer at Associated Builders and Contractors of Northern California Chapter. ABC NorCal represents nearly 500 companies, both large and small. ABC NorCal represents nearly 500 companies, both large and small, across Northern California. We are the construction professionals in your community, building your community. We operate state and federally approved apprenticeship programs in painting, plumbing, carpentry, electrical, and construction craft labor. We also oversee the training for California Fire and Sprinkler Association. ABC NorCal is committed to helping people earn, learn, and build construction careers in their communities. In addition to providing work opportunities in the industry, we ensure folks are trained, safe, and delivering the highest quality product possible. For over 45 years, ABC has done its part in training a skilled workforce in construction trades. Over 1,800 state and federally approved apprentices, journey workers and craft trainees workers and craft, I'm sorry, and craft trainee workers and craft trainees come from all walks of life. Some are fresh out of high school, some are starting a second career, and some are just desiring a fresh start. They emerge from the programs with a good-paying job, health benefits, and skills and trainings that can take their career in many directions. It's truly a path that is endless with opportunities. ABC NorCal, with its partner programs, has a proven track record to reduce recidivism rates, improve jobs readiness skills, and create long-term employment. Our partnership is a vital piece of ensuring a pathway out of poverty for the participants in critical service and Northern California construction community. With the state facing a craft professional demand of over 521,000 through December 2026, we remain committed to being the solution provider for a diverse skilled and trained workforce to build and rebuild California. For that reason, we respectfully request that you vote no on moving forward with the community workforce agreement. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Ron Cheshire.
Hold on a second, Mr. Cheshire. Checking some difficulties. Go ahead, city clerk.
Yes, it's my understanding that Zoom is, it's not down. It's, the video is down, or it is not?
The camera in the chamber is out, but the Zoom is still connected and all participants are still able to participate in the meeting verbally.
Well, let's take a recess. With this law from the governor allowing us to meet virtually and in person, if we have a problem with Zoom, we need to stop the meeting. So we're going to stay in compliance with the law. So good.
Yes, that would be appropriate. And also, it's about the seven o'clock hour where we normally take a break.
Let's resume about, what is that, about 10 after? Okay, we'll work on the issues.
Yes, Mayor, we are ready to resume.
Thank you so much. Madam State Attorney, you're comfortable and I'm resuming.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the public, the Zoom feed does seem to be back on. The audio always was on. It was the video. The audio always was on. It was the video that we had a difficulty with. So there was no technical break in the proceedings for purposes of public participation. You are good to go.
Thank you so much. We will resume. Public comment. Public comment is now open. I believe Mr. Cheshire was at the podium.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members and staff, Ron Cheshire, currently Director of Training and Education for the Monterey Santa Cruz Building Construction Trades Council. I know you have some people here this evening that are philosophically opposed to this type of agreement, community workforce agreement. But I don't quite understand. I don't quite understand why they're not actually supporting this, giving young people careers, disengaged workers, new careers, opportunities, opportunities for minorities, women, veterans, maybe formerly incarcerated individuals and such. These are the people that we deal with the most in the communities to try and give them an opportunity to get into a good paying career, not just a job. Now, I've heard some statistics this evening, and I just sort of walked in here, Anya, because I was at the granddaughter's play over at Foothill School. And I don't want to sit here and refute a bunch of this stuff. I mean, you know, you hear people throw all these figures out there and such, and a lot of it's belongs in the can that you put out in the front of your house and that certain day, okay? I've sent you information from the Department of Apprenticeship Standards. You have 33 apprentices currently. Well, maybe not currently. As of the middle of last year in the city of Seaside. Four of them came from unilateral programs. Unilateral programs or non-union programs. There are certified non-union programs in the state of California. They're in the roofing business. They're roofers. There are 580 apprentices in Monterey County in that count. And 97% of them are in joint apprenticeship training programs where they're learning a career. They're learning a trade. They're learning how to be proficient, skilled individuals, can take that trade anywhere they want. But hopefully, they can stay in this community. Now, we've worked hard in your community over the last couple of years trying to recruit individuals to get in these trades. And I hope you see fit to at least give a portion of the jobs. You're not going to give every public works project and put it under a CWA. You have a threshold. You're trying to program out. So I encourage you to go ahead and move forward and get into a community workforce agreement.
Thank you so much.
And let's work with this community. Thank you.
Hello, City Council Mayor Oglesby. My name is Elias Rodriguez. I'm a fourth-year apprentice for the SMW 104. To ensure the general public investment and public work is maximized and protected, having a skilled and trained workforce ensures the use of most highly trained workforce available in order to deliver a project on time, on or under budget, and to hire local workers that have graduated from state-certified apprenticeship programs on these projects. Please vote yes on the CWA. This provides new career opportunities for local residents with careers with great health insurance benefits and a great retirement. So I guess I just wanted to say a little about what I've gotten from my apprenticeship. I'm a fourth year, so that means I've gone through over 20 classes. And each of those classes are up to like, if I were to pay for them by myself, would be $1,600 each. My union has paid for all those classes. They actually have me enrolled in college for these classes, so I get college credits. And if I wanted to, I would be able to get a grant from my union to get a better education, like a bachelor's degree, if some, if more if I wanted. I'm 26, and I have more benefits than I could even need. I have vacation, pay, healthcare, and more than one pension. So I would just like to ask you guys to please vote yes on the CWA.
Good afternoon, Mayor Oglesby, City Council staff and members of the community. My name is Lamont Adams, and I'm the Business Manager of the Electrician Union that represents Monterey, Santa Cruz, and San Benito County. We do have an approved, state-approved apprenticeship program where my students actually earn while they learn. I've had students come from some of the other programs who have spoken today, and they come to my program thousands of dollars in debt and without any experience. So I encourage the City Council to move forward with the CWA. The PLA for Rancho San Juan High School in Salinas was done with $1.85 million under budget. So there's a lot of evidence that shows that PLAs do save the city money. There's thousands of PLAs in the Bay Area. I wish we would try some here. Santa Clara has PLAs on several projects, and they've all been successful. So I wish the council or the staff would do more research instead of coming with figures that have not been checked. Thank you so much, and I wish you guys would support this PLA. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Don Chapin. I'm a general engineering contractor headquartered in Salinas and serve this tri-county area with a wider array of construction activity as well as being a major material supplier. I currently employ about 350 people here locally, local employees, all local people that live and work in this community. We perform and have performed work in the city of Seaside, Seaside and the surrounding areas since 1978. We're a non-union merit shop contractor. We're not signatory to any union agreements, and we choose to provide a workplace for our workforce that's merit-based and full of opportunity for all of our employees to advance in their respective trades within our company. We're proud of our workforce made up of men and women from this community who live and work right here. I have to ask the question, why? Why would the city of Seaside want to entertain this workforce agreement that is so discriminatory against any member of the community that chooses not to be joining to a union? What's wrong with a fair and balanced system you currently employ? That's competitive, and it allows the selection of the lowest qualified contractor, no matter what their union status is. I have to re, I've read your report from the staff, and I just have a few comments on that. First, I want you to know that 87% of the tradespeople in this community are non-union. Only 13% belong to unions locally. This agreement has nothing to do with wages. Projects, public works projects all require the payment of prevailing wages. There is no cheating. I'm offended by that comment. It has nothing to do with apprentices. Public Works projects require the use of apprentices. We employ many apprentices. In fact, we take and train people that would not normally be in the construction trades, and we do that through the non-union merit shop system. It has nothing to do with project delivery. When was the last time you had a public works project delayed that a PLA would have cured? It has nothing to do with local employment. Only our company and some other companies sitting behind me that can say, we employ 350 local employees, we can deliver to you, not 25%, not 50%, 100% local employees to your construction projects. Those other guys can't say that. It has nothing to do with reporting. You get certified perils every week. You monitor them. You have all the demographic information you need in those reports. And staff is correct. City of Watsonville does have a PLA. Not for much longer. It's a disaster. Call them. Ask them. I urge you each to call them and talk to them. They're considering eliminating the PLA or at least moving it to a threshold of many millions of dollars before it's an egg. Escape clause? Not sure what that is or why. Obviously, staff knows there's a problem, so you must have to have an escape clause. Seems crazy to me. The agreement proposed will do a couple of things. It will stymie competition. It will eliminate bidders. It will cost your city and its taxpayers thousands of dollars more, if not millions. The unions are going to tell you that this agreement is the best thing since sliced bread, and it won't eliminate people like me, but I'm here to tell you it will. Please don't tell me and my employees that we can't work for the city of Seaside. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, there will show tape first to give honor to my Rams. Thank you. We are the champs. I got to give credit to them. But I came down here because I'm actually more appalled that we're even considering this issue. I just listened on the internet coming over here where the unions are, oh, we've got all of these young kids in here and all. Well, that's a lie. And I served this city for 58 years. I know. That's a lie. We've been trying to get young people into these programs and stuff. They don't work. One of the bad things about this union issue is, and I'm fully supportive of union, but this is not the way to do it. The city shouldn't become the union. Was the Coffin and Bowl project, Seaside Highland. We ended up with, what did we do when we pushed a lot of union? Everybody came from Fresno. Everybody. We couldn't get a job. If you came and asked me as a developer to hire you just on the spot, I couldn't do it with this program you guys want to do. I could not do it. I would have to say you, I have to go to the union and get permission. And if you're not qualified through the union yet, I can't hire you at all. So we're stopping anyone that wants a job in this city right off the top. Second thing I want to know, can they stop all the development in this city for the next three years if this is a three-year agreement? Basically, I'm seeing this document where Wizard ain't here. You might as well put a union seat up there because everything you do, you have to go to them if it's over $750,000. That means if we lay one street, you know that's more than $750,000. This is not your role. This is not what we have pointed you for. This is not we voted you for to be up there and become the union. You have fair bidding in this city already. You have first opportunity choice for our residents. You have over $5,000 any public works contracts. You have to fair market it. I mean, what more do you want? Now you got to become the union and say, if you don't qualify, you don't. I agree with Mr. Don there. Man, I'm telling you, that company EMS, some of Granite, Monterey Peninsula Engineering, those guys have done a lot of work in this area, and a lot of people are employed by them, better Seaside residents. You're about to tell them they're going to have to get employed. That's not fair. Don't become the union. Stay the city of Seaside. Fair, open bidding is all I support in here. Don't believe just because I might hire that one kid. You heard them say it themselves. Ron Cheshire just left. We had 39 people in there, one person from Seaside. Come on. We can't start this union stuff, and I'm not against the union, but I don't think the city council should become the union. Please don't vote for this.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members, mayor. My name is Jeff Manili, and some of you might know me, but I've been a citizen or resident here in Seaside for 25 years. And I'm also an employee of the Don Chapin Company. I'd like to make three points. First off, as a citizen in the Seaside, I can't get my arms around why this would make things less expensive for the taxpayers of Seaside. I would like to give an example. I've been an estimator for 25 years. Typically, it's MPE. It's Chapin. It's Granite. Granite Rock. Tiger comes down. You adopt this, and all of a sudden, MPE and Chapin can't bid that. You eliminated 40% of your bidders, of your bidding volume. So by default, the prices aren't going to be cheaper because you're eliminating the variables that give you the flexibility of a non-union shop. And as an employee of a non-union company, I personally have built four or five projects for the city of Seaside. I'm currently the superintendent and estimator for Highland Otis. Park will be turned over in four and a half weeks. Pretty efficient. Non-union company, trained. Talk to your staff. They'll say they haven't seen work like that in a long time. Third point is going back to the costs. As an estimator of both union and non-union companies throughout my career, I can tell you that the flexibility of being a non-union shop allows me to keep my estimated costs low. And if you guys want to ask why, I can talk to you guys individually about how that works in mechanics. But by keeping the cost low, I can give the city the best price that we can give. It's an estimate. But I have some flexibility to keep the cost down, which by result keeps the cost of the taxpayers down. You eliminate that, all you need to shop, no flexibility. So anyway, I would like to suggest you stay the course, keep things the way they are. And if you're looking for local hire and tradesmen, well, you know, start with the young people. Young people don't seem to want to work hard anymore. That's the problem. We have staffing problem. We have desire problem. So anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bart Bruno. I am the Controller at Monterey Peninsula Engineering, and I serve on the Board of ABC NorCal. I am part of the third generation of family members working for a family business. That means I get to work with my mom, my dad, my brother, and many other family members on a daily basis. As a local business, we put our time and money back into this community. I reviewed our accounts payable vendor file and found 53 seaside businesses listed there. Monterey Tire, Delray Supply, Granite Rocks, Cypress Coast Ford, Pencil Welding Supply, just to name a few. In addition to utilizing the local businesses, MP hires local area residents. 98% of our current workforce consists of local area residents. This, our workforce is very diverse and with a substantial minority participation. After review of our employee database, going back to 1989, we found the percentage of local area residents over the last 33 years to be 97%. Moving back to the present, we checked into three recent seaside projects to get an actual local participation levels. Our actual utilization was one project at 91% and two projects at 97% local participation. MP, MPE has a history of hiring young people entering the construction workforce. I reviewed our employee database, and over the past 33 years, nearly 22% of our new hires were 25 years old or younger. These are the people entering the trades. Working for MPE, they are trained and they work their way up. One example is a 22-year-old that came to us after working at a temp agency. He had no real construction experience at that time. This young man got on the job training, and over time, he advanced and took on more and more responsibility. Most recently, this man that originally came to us from a temp agency was the project superintendent in charge of a large pipeline project on General Jim Moore Boulevard. Stories like his are not uncommon at MPE because MPE grows good people. Another example is a young man in our office. He came to us as a 23-year-old laborer and is now a project manager. Another example, Brandon Pryor spoke earlier this evening. In summary, MPE has a long history of hiring local people, hiring young people that are just entering the trades and training these people, these employees to become valuable members of our team. The draft CWA has presented what unfairly deny local area residents the opportunity to work. The CWA would actually reduce local resident participation, and the CWA would force local workers to stay home as others come in to work for their community. This is not right. For this reason, we ask that the city does not pass this. And if it needs to, any CWA must include a local workforce exemption. Companies that demonstrate a history of local hiring should be exempted from the CWA. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members and staff. My name is Angelo Figueroa. I'm retired. I've worked in the construction industry for almost 40 years. My last position was supervising inspection, and I ran a training facility. And I'm here to support ABC NorCal. I visited their facility, and I was very impressed on the level of training that they give these new, current, and future construction workers and what they provide to the city, the community, and the contractors. And on behalf of the Monterey County Business Council, where workforce and economic development are top priorities, we strongly adjurs, we strongly urge the city of Seaside not to adopt the community workforce agreement, and I oppose it. Thank you. the city of seaside not to adopt the community workforce agreement. And I oppose it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council. I'm Pete Terramina. I'm a managing owner at Monterey Peninsula Engineering. I'm going to speak to my expertise. I've been in the estimating and project management part of the business for quite a bit. I do other things, but that's my group. I have about 10 staff and they're great people and we've been bidding for over four decades in and around the peninsula with seaside. And I got a few factoids to share. So just some numbers on relevant projects in the last four or five years. A lot of numbers have been thrown around and these are actual numbers, not guesses or one-offs. So I just want to say, so we, we've bid about 10 projects in the last four or five years totaling about $13 million with the city of seaside. We were lowest bidder. Of those 10 projects, only four had actual union contractors show up to bid. The, and it was about $10 million worth of work for that. The other five, we were either the only bidder or there was just a few of us and our open shop peers. I'll speak to the four projects that they were, the union actually showed up. And again, those were like the Fremont Ortiz sewer upgrade, the West Broadway Urban Village project totaling $10 million. The nearest open shop contractor, sorry, union contractor to our low bid of all those projects totaled about $3 million more, nearly 30%. So there's a real data points in your city, recent ones. So the idea that A, the unions will show up, they haven't. They have less than 50% attendance. If this was, you know, homeroom, they'd get an F. And then when they do show up, they're 30% greater. And I think other people spoke to the nearly 100% local employee workforce that we have. You get a perfect trifecta, low bid, regular responsiveness to your bids and, and union, I'm sorry, local residency of our employee staff. So you know, understand when projects get, when unions get busy, they might go to other areas and ultimately they may not frequent the local agency. So if you have to do a, a union CWA, please carve out, don't cut us out, carve us in to the document. Make an exception for local contractors who have a workforce of 50, 70, whatever you choose, a super majority. That would be the best of all worlds if you have to swallow this poison pill. Thank you for your time and.
Before the next speaker speaks, I think I allowed the union side to go over a minute. So I want to be fair, but I didn't want to assume what the next person is going to say, but I think I know what you're going to say, Mr. Bruno. So if you go over a little bit, that'd be okay.
If I do it right, it's two minutes and 57 seconds. But if this part is not counted.
No, that doesn't count.
Okay. Peter, you left our good results up here. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I wish I brought my glasses. I'm Paul Bruno. I'm the CFO of, and a principal with Monterey Peninsula Engineering. I was a seaside resident. My first home was here right up on Military Avenue. Our family invests in this community and we volunteer our time here. For the past 16 years, can't believe it's been that long, I have served on the board of the seaside groundwater basin and water master. I'm currently its chair. I sent an email earlier today. I hope that each of you had a chance to review it. I think we've made the point, my son was up here and you know, MP is local. One of our earliest projects was the Lugano Grande Park and I personally worked as a labor on the Del Monte and Broadway improvements in the early 1980s. Peter discussed our work with MP and my son has discussed our local workforce. So I want to hit a couple other points. First, there's a lot of talk about training of local workers, training of workers. Well, MP hires young people and we train them. We participate in the ABC program, but we do a lot of, you know, growing good people. You know, I recall, Mr. Penaro is here and we both used to be young. I recall working side by side with Manny Penaro in 1982 at the Pine Canyon Project. Manny was barely out of high school and he's got to start in the industry with MPE. My father hired him. We trained him and he went on to his next job as a journeyman operator. We train people. There are countless others like Manny over the last 40 years. Second, the CWA policy before you has significant cost impacts that have not been adequately vetted. Prior to coming back to work in the family business, I was a CPA and I dive into the numbers. The staff report notes that the CWA adds substantial costs in the range of 5 to 20% more. That's what it states in your own report. Peter, of course, says it's more like 30, but let's just use 20% for now to be conservative. So for the fire station listed in the staff report, the cost increase could be $3.2 million or more for that one project. If you take those, now I extrapolated because I tried, there's more data. So I extrapolated the potential costs to using their capital improvement budget. It's a city document, page 3, 14, 15 and 16 is what I looked at and looked at the applicable projects over the next five years. The cost of the CWA for those projects over the next five years would be 6.5 million to 26 million or more. And actually, my son's holding up a $26 million check in case you want to really look at what one of those looks like. And afterwards, if anybody wants to take a picture with the big check, we'll stick around. So, but if you also take those listed projects to completion, the total cost city would be between 13 to $55 million more. That's a huge amount to spend without a fiscal analysis. Someone needs to compute how many parks or affordable housing units could be built with that money. We know it goes a long way. Also, we know that in the end, it's about hiring local and training young people. That's what's more important to you and it's also important to us. And we do both. By the nature, on my email, we do both. My email included several suggestions, including a local workforce exemption. By their nature, local contractors often far exceed the 25% goal set out in the CWA. In fact, we've shown that MP has nearly quadrupled that goal in its city projects. So if you're gonna, first of all, we don't believe you should go for it. I think there's a lot of people have made arguments why you need to look at it more before you direct staff to go further. But if you are going to go further, we suggest the CWA exempt any general contractor bidding on a project who can certify that a minimum of say 50, 60 or 75% of their employees. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Oglesby and the rest of the council. Thank you for your consideration tonight. My name is Mike Avala. I'm with Avala Construction. We're a Monterey-based general contractor. We're a B license contractor. So we specialize in vertical construction rather than most of these folks are A license contractors doing all your roads. City of seaside hasn't done that many projects recently that are vertical construction. So we don't have a big record of doing specific seaside projects. However, in seaside, we've worked on numerous schools through the Monterey Peninsula Unified School District using the prevailing wage situation. We're an open shop contractor, much like these folks employ all locals, train young people and, and are often one of very few bidders on your projects. We've been involved in your efforts to try and put ADUs in place. If you look at the record, we're one of the few bidders that's participated in that process. Local project in the city of seaside recently and last few years, a couple of auto dealerships that we built. We've, we just finished a childcare center up here on, on Broadway. Martin Luther King School a couple of times. And the folks that run those projects happen, the superintendents, I thought about it today, the superintendents that are running those projects actually live here in seaside. So I want to encourage you to, to maintain the local workforce in vertical construction. I'm going to try and hurry here. It's a little more, little different than the A license folks. We employ a lot of subcontractors. Want to point out that the lion sheriffs of contractors in the Monterey Bay area are open shop. I think the statistic is correct that 85% of the workforce in Monterey County in the construction trades are open shop employees. And if you want locals to work here, you need to maintain the open shop participation. This, this agreement does not do that. In no way does it do that. It specifically excludes all those open shop folks. So you're excluding 85% of the workforce, the construction workforce on any vertical construction. Little sub note, we're the only contractor locally, I think I can say this, the only one that's built a ground up fire station in the last maybe three or four decades in, in the local area. We built the recent one in Marina, prevailing wage project. Again, these folks have told the tale as far as training, as far as documentation, as far as all those things. So I didn't prepare a written statement, but I hope I'm getting my point across. When you start doing vertical construction, it becomes even more important. So I, please don't, don't sign up for this agreement. Thank you very much.
Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling in from a phone. Joe Lubus, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Good evening, Mayor Oglesby. My name is Joe Lubus. I am a Northern California taxpayer. And in doing some research on the issue of project labor agreements, I looked at a local vicinity or municipality that was, that had it and I checked and I looked at Watsonville and it's had a pretty bad history. In May 26th, 2020, their Lincoln Street safety bids were rejected due to the lowest bid being 30% over the estimate. The the Monterey Bay scenic trail segment, Aloney Parkway, it was estimated at 1.6 million. And on May 25th of last year, there were nine change orders increasing the price to 2 million, which was 30% overestimate. Back, you know, in 2017, there was the digester mixing fats, oil and grease receiving station. They only had one bid. It was actually estimated at 1.1 million. There was only one bid and the, the the bid was rejected 1.7 million. Airport Freedom Trunk Sewer Replacement, it was estimated 3.6 million. Its lowest bid at 2.9 million was deemed to be non-responsive. Therefore, the contract went to a the next bid, which was 4.24 million, which was 30% overestimate. In short, don't follow Watsonville's bad example and please reject this community workforce agreement.
Thank you for your comments. Jolene Kramer, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Good evening, Mayor Oglesby, Mayor Pro Tem Pacheco and city council members. My name is Jolene Kramer and I represent the Monterey Santa Cruz County's Building and Construction Trades Council, which in turn represents thousands of construction workers and their families in Monterey and Santa Cruz counties. We have been engaged with city staff members for about five months on the negotiation of a community workforce agreement. We appreciate the professionalism and candor of the city attorney and city manager. It has been a productive process and we appreciate their time and interest in negotiating an agreement that benefits the resident, residents of seaside and aims to bring more seaside residents into middle-class lifelong construction careers. As you've heard from folks tonight, a community workforce agreement will ensure that seaside construction projects are built on time and on budget with the added benefit of employing highly skilled construction workers that live in your area and invest in the local economy. It will also build capacity for construction training and employment opportunities through high-quality joint labor and management apprenticeship programs and ensure that reputable contractors are attracted to seaside projects. It is, it is compatible with any type of contracting method and allows all contractors to participate without limitation. It will not increase costs. In fact, it will save costs by incentivizing fair bidding and contracting practices and by discouraging participation by unscrupulous contractors who cut corners and cheat workers out of wages. And there is cheating on public works projects. One of the ways that they cheat is by misclassifying workers as an employee of Chapin Construction just admitted that they do. I want to make it clear that contractors must pay the prevailing wage. So there's no difference in cost. Studies have shown that bid prices are no different when there is a CWA on a project versus when there is not. The anti-CWA folks you've heard from are from industry groups and don't represent workers in your community. They are ideologically opposed to CWAs and that's why they're here today making threats to this council. There is nothing, again, there is nothing preventing any contractor from bidding on a CWA project in response to some of the comments that council member Pacheco made earlier. I just want to make sure that's abundantly clear. Any contractor can bid on a CWA project. CWAs have also been upheld as legal by the US Supreme Court, state Supreme Court, courts across this land. And they're more and more popular throughout the state of California and that is because they work. All of that being said, we are almost done with this agreement. We're actually only down to one issue, which is the dollar threshold. And the building trades come, has come up to 500,000 because we want to make sure that the agreement captures as many projects as possible within the first three-year trial period. We understand that the city manager and city attorney felt like they couldn't go higher than that because of a report from the prior city manager in September 2020, but that's not binding on this council. We therefore ask you tonight that you approve the agreement before you with a $500,000 threshold. And we are in agreement regarding the terms. So we hope you can approve the document as presented. We sincerely appreciate your consideration.
Thank you so much.
Agreement.
Thank you for your comments. Eric Christensen, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Yeah, they automatically get cut off.
Eric Christian, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Good evening. My name's Eric Christian. I'm the executive director of the Coalition for Fair Employment in Construction. We're a statewide organization comprised of union and non-union contractors who were formed 23 years ago solely to oppose discriminatory project labor agreements. First, let me correct something that was stated. Thousands of PLAs in the Bay Area alone by one of the business agents who spoke. We're a statewide organization and there haven't been thousands of PLAs even considered in the state of California in the 23 years we've been doing this. There haven't even been 500. So I'm not sure what they're referring to, but these are very unpopular agreements. You can find not one entity in Monterey County that is currently employing project labor agreements. That's how popular they are. Questions for the board that I wish you could consider. And if you cannot answer them, this needs to be delayed until you can. When was this PLA approved to be negotiated? We've been involved in every step of this process. There was never negotiation allowed by the city council for staff to go forward with the PLA negotiation at all. Check your minutes. That's a Brown Act violation. The National Labor Relations Act has clearly been violated by this project labor agreement, the way that it was brought about. That's something you need to consider, the legal aspects of that. What is the problem that this discriminatory agreement seeks to remedy? What are your current local hire numbers that this PLA seeks to remedy? In the tricam area, we've seen no evidence that this would help at all. And in fact, evidence to the contrary, that it would hurt. Have you conducted a survey of your local contractors to find out their opinions on PLA similar to what the San Jose Unified School District and the East May Municipal Utility District did when they conducted surveys, which came back so damning that no PLA was actually implemented in those Bay Area districts because 50% of their bidders said they would not bid the project. What does your PLA, why does it not have an escape clause similar to the Chula Vista Elementary School District or the Southwestern Community College District? Where if they do not get three bidders or the bids are 10% over engineer's estimate, they have to go out to rebid, which they've had to do numerous times. Why don't you have that? Your negotiated PLA allows for not one non-union employer to employ not one of their local employees, zero. Why? Why can't local non-union employees, which are the majority of the construction workforce in your region, in the state and in this country, they are not allowed under your PLA to work? How much will your PLA cost just to oversee? We know the PLA is at five to 30% cost, but what about just to oversee it? Is your staff going to be doing this? Locking yourselves in for three years? Why would you not bid work with and without a PLA to see the data for yourselves? That's what the Ventura County Board of Supervisors voted to do late last year. And that's what they're doing with their next six projects. Are PLA proponents confident enough in PLAs that they would be willing to do that? I know that we are. Why wouldn't you protect yourselves by doing that? Have you checked what Watsonville's PLA has done to their bids? It has been a disaster for the city of Watsonville. Where is that data? Why has it not been presented? Thank you for your time. Give this to due consideration and vote on this in a proper way, which is.
Thank you for your comments. Peter Kaiser, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council citizens. This is a serious issue. And basically, in some. And basically, in summary, you need to consider if something is not broken, don't try to fix it. We have excellent private contractors doing excellent work on our streets and buildings and so forth. You've heard them speak tonight. They have excellent workers. Their workers are promoted on merit. They're not promoted on seniority. And you know how this all works. So you want, and they, some of them have like huge majority of their workers are local and they move up the ranks and they become superintendents of projects. And I was looking carefully at hearing the briefing on this from the city staff member, and I thought they said that if some workers are non-union, if they to get into this agreement, they have to become union members. And I think that goes against the Supreme Court rulings on that. I was in one area working and that we didn't have to, we couldn't be forced to be part of the union and we didn't have to pay the union political dues and that those were the rights established by the Supreme Court. So we have to remember that that these majority of the workers in the construction business are non-union. And we want them to be able to have an opportunity to work on projects in their own city where they pay taxes. So this community work agreement is a is going the wrong way. It's trying to make something worse that's already working. So respectfully, please vote against it and let these other people do their continuing excellent work. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, at this time, no other members of the public have indicated they wish to make comments on this item.
Thank you so much. Public comment is closed. Bring them back to the dais. Any questions or comments? Our council member Garcia Arizona.
You know, I think we've heard from both sides, but I think something that really struck me earlier was the legal argument that we might face and considering there's a legal issue before us, I think we should consult with legal to ensure we're not overstepping or we're not we're we're in the realm of things, if that makes sense. So, Mr. City Attorney, would you have something to say in respect to that?
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia Arizona. Excellent question. I think I answered that earlier. We have received a I don't want to call it a formal threat, but there are some legal issues related to the National Labor Rights Act. And as it relates to this agreement, I have not looked at those arguments or formally briefed them for the city council, and I definitely think it would behoove this council to allow me the opportunity to brief it and to present that information in closed session to this council as to your legal risks associated with entering into this type of an agreement.
Uh yeah, anybody else have any more comments? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, something else, well, something else was brought up about the the Brown Act and giving direction to enter into negotiations. I just, I'm perhaps you can address that if you'd like, if you can. I was kind of under the impression that we directed staff to to work with them and come back. And I see this as a draft. I do not see this as a as a finished product that has been. There's been no action taken by the the council on this product or anything about it. So I I don't see the Brown Act violation, but perhaps there is one.
Well, that's that's okay, I would want you to finish.
Yeah, yeah. And then, yeah, well, let's just start start with the legal stuff. Thank you.
Okay, well, what we'll do, we'll 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 figure that out. We'll let the city attorney figure that out. We won't. We won't have ask her to figure that out right here today. So it seems as though we want her to take a look at this document that was just given to us earlier this afternoon. Anybody has any more comments before I ask for some type of continuance or motion?
I have a variety of comments and say them just because all of you have put forth your time in showing up. So these are my, this is, excuse me. I heard a variety of things tonight. I heard it costs more, it costs less, and it costs the same. I heard there is no delay. I heard they're in moving forward in projects and then there is delay. I heard there's potential lawsuits. I heard that were were violating the Brown Act potentially. I heard tonight Watsonville is very successful and then I hear tonight Watsonville is not successful. And then I spent some time thinking about this, kind of last week. And then I think about, I talked to numerous people over the past eight year, eight years at least. And I hear Marina is growing and enhancing their community and Seaside is doing nothing. Personally, I disagree, but I understand their comments. Over the years and attempting to move seaside forward and to develop, I can can remember two developers dying in the process of us moving forward. I can remember urban renewals dealing millions of dollars from the city of Seaside. I mean, stealing is the wrong word, but we had millions of dollars, it vanished and the state took it. But the economies collapsed twice. Developers have said who have bought property have delayed in moving forward. Ford or closed and there's been more the loss, there's more than one lawsuit that has slowed or stopped seaside. There's been COVID and significant water issues. You know, we've been saying this for decades. Seaside needs to move forward effectively and efficiently. I have two personal, maybe three personal goals in this whole discussion. One seaside residents be hired, seaside residents be trained. Seaside move forward without delay or excuses. I believe we need to be very careful in what and how we do significant and long-term agreement as it relates to the impact of our residents and and the city. I believe that it's often wiser to take baby steps rather than jumping into the water without knowing how deep it is. I believe being inclusive in talking and discussions is good and compromise has necessary value. Finally, I believe seaside and our residents must be number one in the process and delays and seasons cannot no longer be accepted. I believe staff, after listening to all the council members tonight and hearing from the audience, may need to bring this back and and look at and analyze all this stuff on both sides of the of the fence and what's true and what's not true. So we can provide necessary decisions that will make this move forward. But I think, and lastly, I think there are lots, there needs to be a lot more analytical information because this is significant. I mean, it's how the city moves forward. There, you know, it may not feel like it touches people, but it touches a three to five years, a lot of programs, a lot of money. And we need to do as much as we can with little money can and hire seaside people and make seaside first. And and that's our goal, or that's my goal. And I would expect all of us to agree with that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Anybody else? Uh council member Campbell, and then we probably need some type of motion.
Okay, um, there's been a lot of, as my colleague here said, there's been a lot of very persuasive speakers tonight, I do have to say, um, and and it's not an easy decision for me, and it sounds like this is not going to be a decision made tonight. In the future, when this does come back, just because people have made a big effort here, I'm leaning towards the perhaps a trial period of a side-by-side bidding process where CWA is put out and a and a traditional bid is put out and we, if you know, if we have the legal standing to do it, the council weighs it at the time. That's the direction I'm going. But it sounds like there's some legal issues to consider, so I move we continue this to a date. Uncertain. If I could get some some input from the city attorney on how to write.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Actually, you could continue this, or you could just direct us to bring back the legal opinion because my intent will be to brief you in closed session on the legal analysis here. Because there's
All right.
This is just motion to give us direction to prepare the legal opinion and to discuss it, and then we'll re-recalender it for hearing when we're ready.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we ask the city attorney to bring this back, a legal briefing of her earliest possible convenience.
Hold on, it's been probably moved a second that we direct the city council to research the issues and bring this back when appropriate. On the question, Mayor Pro Tem.
I don't know, what the mayor just said may answer my my inquiry or suggestion of a friendly amendment. To broaden that a little with more analytical information regarding things, we just don't want to. I mean, personally, I wouldn't want to bring something and have this whole discussion go back again. And so we need more information in this process. I'm hoping if I kind of heard what you said.
That that'd be included in the legal analysis.
Okay, as long as it's included, more information for the whole thing. Great.
You're, okay. All right, on the question, I got just a few points, just to to clarify the record, I I think the red herring about Watsonville, you know, you could just leave that at the house. All right, you know, you know, it's kind of make it sound like Watsonville is the only city in California that's doing it. I stopped counting at city thirty thirty-eight. I just stopped telling. I didn't count the counties. I didn't count the school districts and I didn't count the special districts. So if you add them all up, CWAs project labor agreements are out there by the hundreds. And she, we shouldn't act as though Watsonville is the standard, right? If you want to use it, Watsonville, then that's fine. But then someone may use the one that's working well. That is saving money. So I just throw that out there. Next. Read my own writing. Now, I'm city attorney, you know, I wanted to be clear about the continuance, so to speak, and and because you want to review the letter that we received late this afternoon or whenever it came in, that doesn't indicate we did anything wrong or there any legal viability on our side. Just just for the record, I I just want to make that clear.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Mayor. No, that it does not indicate that the staff or that the city council has done anything wrong. It's that there is an issue that's been raised. It's a legal issue, and I want to make sure that the city is protected to the maximum extent possible and that if we enter into an agreement, we have done everything we can to minimize the risk that we might be challenged on it.
Thank you. And then my last point is just someone said, if it's not broke, you know, trying to say if it's not broke, then then why change? I'm not sure it's not broke. You know, many of the residents I talked to want to see local people working these jobs. And that's what I've been hearing for years and years. How do we get more local people working these local jobs? And so it's not automatic that we're saying the present system is broke because we're looking at a CWA. But we hear that too, that we want to see more local people are working these local jobs. With that, I would say a roll call.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizona.
Aye.
Council and agency member Wizard.
I I think he, well, he just popped in. Did you hear him?
Councilmember Wizard.
Mr. Mayor, that wasn't I.
Thank you. Council and agency member Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim and Vice Chair Pacheco.
Yes.
Mayor and Chair Oglesby.
Aye.
Your motion passes unanimously.
Auto number ten A, new council members request. Do we have any? We were at ten A, new council members request, my understanding is we didn't have any. We'll go to ten B, city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Oh, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Campbell wanted to have a discussion about the status and future of the general plan. And so I would appreciate hearing what he's looking for.
Uh, yes, of course, council.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, thank you. City manager, I just, I really wanted to bring us before the council so we could have a so we're not violating the Brown Act. We can actually discuss this amongst ourselves and and come to an understanding of what we hope to expect from staff and our consultants on the on the general plan. It is something that has been going on for a very long time. I can't remember the years, except all I know is when I was first elected in twenty fourteen, our city manager back then said we needed to update the general plan. So we're now approximately eight years later. Over a million dollars later, a million point three later, which is more than we we approved of for the the general plan, and I have not seen a draft of the general plan since November of twenty seventeen. And so obviously, I'm concerned, I want to hear if I would appreciate staff's response to some of my questions for this. I do not know if anyone else has seen the memorandum, but I think we should, we should have it. It's obviously public knowledge, I mean, it's a, you know, public record. And perhaps if the council is open to it, we could have a brief report from staff outlining this memorandum or whatever the the rest of the council thinks. But either way, I want I want this this general plan to move forward post haste. I've been, it's been described to me as as some people have called it the Bible or the Constitution of the city. What is what a general plan is. And that's how it's described, and it's very important, we need to move forward. And I would appreciate any other council members' input on this.
Anyone else? May I put in?
Just briefly, I remember Mr. Mailin, former city manager, said he would not have spent but a hundred thousand dollars on on that kind of document. And we all after it was already expended. I concur with Councilman Campbell that this has been seven, eight years in the process. The document should be made out of gold and impact the lives of seaside for the future forty years. I think this you have a timeline of December, I believe, of this year. I I courage staff for the the million dollar, the consultant of this to make sure we stay within that timeframe. I think that it's long overdue. And that would include I would suggest or hope of community input or community changes. It'd be nice to have a a document that goes on the wall that's totally done or totally approved and blessed by December of this year. So I'll just leave it at that. And but in many comments with Mr. Campbell, I I concur with his thought process. Thank you.
Anybody else? Did we have? See, man, do you have anybody that was in a brief this memorandum?
Absolutely, Assistant City Manager Trevon Barber will go ahead and walk through where we are with the general plan and where we're going.
Okay, before before you go, I want to throw some questions in there, and maybe you can ask from doing or after. You know, this has been going on for a while, but I I think when we started this, the world has changed two or three times. And as you are trying to create this, what was said is the constitution for the city, you don't want to lock yourself in by adopting a document that has been outdated the day you you set it up. So maybe that's why you guys restarted a couple of times or had to stop. And then the cost, I think the original cost was eight hundred thousand plus. And so if you could speak to why we're at the point we are now, they're just, you know, I think it's important for the citizens to understand how we got here and the timeframe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you for the introduction, City Manager Greathouse. I'm happy to provide an update on the status of the general plan. The general plan twenty forty actually started way back in two thousand and five. And so city staff has been working on it since then to plan and prepare for the next iteration of the city's constitution, as you as you put it. Right now, the city has been in transition with some turnover in staff in the Planning and Community Development Department. And so we have only recently, in the past couple of months, restarted the initiative to produce the general plan twenty forty. What that looks like is we did a contract amendment for the consultant, Rami and Associates, and we are moving forward with them to develop a work plan to bring the product back up to state compliance. So a as the council had pointed out, there have been a number of things that have changed since the last iteration of the draft plan for twenty forty. With that, there are a number of housing laws that have changed, and it's incumbent upon us to bring the general plan up to speed with state code. And so we're actively engaged with the consultant to do that. And some of those items look like the land use decisions that the state has decided to put on us with the denser single family housing and the ADU laws. Some of it looks like environmental justice laws with SB three seventy nine and SB one thousand. And that's just an example of some of the different codes that have been mandated from the state that we are now must come into compliance with before we can bring back a draft general plan for your consideration. So we are eagerly eagerly looking forward to presenting this. We expect the draft to be done within the next three to six months, and then we can engage the community on what that draft, final draft, looks like and and can bring it to the attention of the city council to adopt. Thank you.
Councilman Campbell.
Thanks, Mayor, thank you, Trevon, for 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 doing this, for putting this together on relatively short notice. And I just, I one comment I got to make is is when we, when the state comes up with new statutes and whatever that we need to be obligated to, that happens all the time. I mean, it's going to continue to happen for, I mean, in the next six months, eight months. So so I I I don't think it's unusual for us to to incorporate these things in. I do understand that we've had some other priorities and staff turnovers and things like that that may have delayed this. However, we the the council, previous council approved of something like one point two million contract with a consultant to do this, to do this work. And I thought they were doing it. I thought that's why we paid them the big bucks, and it wasn't falling to staff to do this. So so I, you know, I'm I'm I understand some of it, but a lot of it just is, I feel like we're getting shortchanged and the cost is going up. But I appreciate this fresh schedule here, and my question is, do any IR needs to go out with this as well?
I can follow up with you on the schedule, but the goal is that we, my understanding is that staff brought the draft EIR to council in two thousand and seventeen, and that the changes to conform with state law would not necessarily change that. But that needs to be confirmed with staff before I can give give you an official answer.
Okay.
The the city attorney, I might be able to defer to the city attorney on the EIR, the question.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Campbell, great question. When the council gets ready to this to consider the the update to the general plan, it will also be required to consider the draft EIR document. And the nature and extent of how many changes to the draft EIR have to happen depends on the impact of some of the changes that are made as a result of before dissolution, the new land use changes, et cetera. So you will be required to reissue your draft EIR and certify a final EIR prior to adoption of the general plan update.
Thank you, and all by December.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Just a real simple question. Mr. Campbell pointed out and never showed that costs about a million, too. And you also mentioned other information needs to be provided. Is this going to cost us any more money to get to the goal line, for lack of a better word?
I think you heard the question, Mayor Pro Tim. Right now, what we have already budgeted is the original one point three seven million. And then we also have the recent contract amendment for one hundred and sixty five thousand. That was already budgeted, and that's already approved. So that is anticipated to be spent for for the final, getting across the finish line. There's another component of about a hundred and eighty thousand that's all going to be coming out of the housing fund to update the housing element. And that is happening in concurrence with the general plan twenty forty draft to because of the timelines. It would have happened anyway had we adopted the general plan a year or two ago. So it just so happens that we're spending that money now with the general plan update.
So just because what I hear you saying, you're not coming back, you don't anticipate coming back to the council asking for any money because it's already been approved and moving forward.
That is what we expect, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, thank you.
Just to be clear, you're not guaranteeing it'll be done by December, are you?
I would not like to make that guarantee, no, that is a timeline.
Trying to be cute, my only point is, the reason why it's continued to be updated because things change. And we are required to include those in the plan if they're current law, is that correct?
That is correct.
You can't just say, well, I I I committed to getting this thing down by a certain day, and we knew that was the law, but we didn't include it. I don't think you could do that. Am I right or am I wrong?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, the second thing is, why would you guys use the housing fund and not the general fund?
For the housing update.
Yeah, I that's what I'm throwing it out there because I was, we don't get a lot of housing fund money, and to take a hundred and eighty housing fund money and not use general fund, I'm concerned with that. This is the the concept, you know, the general plan is the city's general plan, and it shouldn't be taken away from the monies in affordable housing, even though you're linking it by saying it's the housing element. You know, we don't, we don't take the the circulation element, and we don't pay for it through CIP funds, right? So I just, I don't want to look up and we, you know, we're talking about affordable housing and what we're trying to do with it, and, you know, hundred and eighty thousand dollars is a lot of money. I don't think, I don't know how much we get a year from all those little entities that pay into it, but that's a lot of money when we particularly have enough money in our general fund. So you know, if if the council doesn't want to change that, then that's fine, but I wanted to point that out. All right, is there anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Wizard.
Thank you so much. I just, you know, first, I wanted to thank you for that astute observation, and I think, you know, there is a link to housing, and sure, the housing element describes where some affordable housing will go. But for me, it's about where we how we produce affordable housing, not how we plan for affordable housing. And I would be disinclined to support an expenditure out of the Affordable Housing Production Fund that we already used to pay the housing program manager's salary to also pay for a housing plan that doesn't produce the actual housing. So I really just want to acknowledge you for catching that and bringing that up. With regard to the general plan in a more general sense, Mr. Barber, what have we done to create some performance conditions with our subsequent contract amendments?
Councilmember Wizard, I'd be more than happy to follow up with the council on the performance aspects of the professional services agreement.
Okay, so I guess I'm trying to understand, like, they come to us and say, we have, you know, okay, let me let me start over. We go to them and say, we need you to include this or exclude that and update the plan accordingly. And they come back and go, okay, that will cost, I think you said a hundred and sixty five or something, a hundred and eighty five, a hundred and eighty, there's some amount of money. It will cost about a hundred and fifty grand. And we say, okay, and write a check, or we say, okay, but you have to do that in the next sixty days. Okay, but you get one shot to do it, and if you don't do it right within sixty days, you get to pay for the amendments. What what kind of performance conditions are we including in these contract amendments to ensure that there's not a continuous delay with increasing costs where we just end up chasing our tail and never getting done?
Councilmember Wizard, that's a great question. Performance standards are integral to protecting the the public trust, and I'd be more than happy to follow up on the specifics of what is in the contract and how we are guaranteeing that.
Okay, I mean, I I agree with you, they are integral to completing projects on time and and on or under budget where feasible. I guess the other side of that is, should I understand or do I recall correctly that there was no not to exceed provision in the original contract, which is how we ended up where we are?
Councilmember Wizard, our standard contract template does have not to exceed amounts.
Right, but did this one?
I I can follow up with you on the specifics of the performance standards that were included in in this specific contract. And just to clarify, we are talking about two different contracts. There's the general plan contract and the housing element contract. Would you like information on both of those?
My only concern with the housing element contract is that it does follow our standard contract and procedure, and includes a not to exceed clause and a schedule of performance. And I would prefer to echo and second the mayor's comments regarding not using our housing fund, our affordable housing fund to pay for it, but precisely and limited to the general plan. If you could return with some information about whether or not to exceed clause was included in the original contract language and what the scheduled performance is on each of the individual contract amendments, now that we're a million and a half dollars into a general plan for a city of nine square miles and thirty five, thirty four thousand people, I have some serious reservations about whether it makes sense to pull the plug and move to a different company on a fixed cost contract, because while we have asked them to make some changes, and while state law has changed underneath us, you know, I've been on the council for four years, the general plan was well along before I was elected, and it does not appear as though we will finish before my term ends. And frankly, that's just flatly unacceptable.
Okay, so you think he captured your 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 questions, Councilman? Okay, so you think he captured your, your, your questions, uh, councilman wizard?
Yes, Mr.
Oh, okay. So we'll make sure, he'll make sure you get them answered. Uh, and then we'll, it was council member Campbell, the mayor for ten.
Okay, um, uh, thank you, Mayor. And, and again, thank you, Mr. Barber. I just, um, I, I first I want to acknowledge that um, I did ask for this to be placed on this agenda for us to discuss amongst ourselves. I really did not want to put pressure on staff. And I, that's why I really appreciate this, this memorandum. Um, and, and I, and these are great questions. And I want to just, you know, note, I want staff to know that we're concerned and we want to see this move forward. And I am perfectly fine with the, uh, mayor's suggestion that when we address the, the um, financing or the payments of this, we will, um, the, that we, that we look at whether we really take it out of the, the affordable housing. I know we're not giving direction tonight. But I do recall that the council did vote for a contract amendment to increase from the original amount for the additional, I can't remember hun, you know, three hundred. I can't remember the amount. I, I think it's written in here, but um, but we did, there wasn't probably a not to exceed amount. And then we did an amendment and exceeded it all legitimately. And voted in front of a, up here on the dais. That's, that's my recollection. And I just wanted to say that. Thank you again, Mr. Barber.
Um, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, just, just hopefully briefly. One, um, thank you for your report. Uh, I, I concur with uh, the councilman that the goal is to get the information. I'm really glad that you're going to come back with some information because it, a lot of the information takes research and following up on stuff. So I think that can be done in a reasonable period of time, a month, two weeks, whatever it is. And then lastly, I don't know, and I don't know how you want to proceed. But it sounds like there's, there's a consensus, it seems like, of moving that fund from a hundred eighty thousand in the housing to, from the general fund. I don't know if the council, if the staff needs to bring it back, but it seems like there's that energy to, to do that in one form or the other. That's all I wanted to point out.
The city manager has the authority to, to move that money around. I think she understands the philosophy of the council at this time. Yeah, it, okay.
I was just going to comment that we're going to be back to look at the mid-year budget at the next meeting. So if it exceeds my authority to transfer funds, then we can go ahead and, and look at it at that time.
Uh, I, well, I think it exceeds, but I don't know how the original, how did a hundred and eighty thousand get named from the first to be used from that fund?
It would have been incorporated in the budget.
That's true. Okay, yeah. No, perfect. Because I was thinking, I held my comments for the mid-year review. But the philosophy is the same. And, you know, as the uh, budget is presented, that could be the adjustment that you guys put up there with the other adjustments we had to make. Uh, we have a handful of things we adjusted. So, uh, uh, Mr. Barber, thank you for excellent memo laying it out. I think you have a couple of questions for uh, council member Wizard and the mayor Pro Tem and, and council member Campbell. I would just include, I, I'm glad you, you, you stated the fact, I believe, this started in two thousand and five, way before all of us got here. But I, I think while you're doing your research, I, 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 I think it'd be helpful if we could say some of this is not uncommon. It's not like a general plan has changed in four years or five years. Right? Uh, so it may take some communities a little longer than others. And we've been through some things that we had to regroup for. But I am looking maybe, what was the gap? If we could figure out why a gap, maybe it got, I can't imagine how it was dropped for two or three years and, and, and we not knew about it. But, but I'm looking for maybe that answer. And then uh, my last point about that is because you stated something about we restarted it. So to ask, you know, I, I'm trying to figure out, well, when did we stop? And so, you know, you may not know that answer, right? And so if it's not there, that's fine. But I think the council is saying, restart it, uh, let's complete it, let's get it done by December as much as you can. All right, well, uh, councilman Campbell. Okay, no, thank you for bringing that up. Go to item number B two vacancy registration list, uh, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, staff has been asked to come back with information on the vacancy, on a vacancy registry list for commercial properties. So I think I'd be looking to, you know, what the timing on that would look like if that's something that we have council consensus on.
Councilman Wizard?
Yeah, I mean, we have a ton of stuff on our work plan. I'm happy to get into line.
Okay, so it's a long line.
But, yeah, I mean, but that's fair to other people, right?
There you go. There you go. Fair to other people and fair to the staff. So, uh, okay, if that's all you have, I think she answered it. Anybody else have any questions to, to, you want them to look at or thoughts? Okay, all right, we'll see it when, when they bring it back. We're now to city attorney, city managers, mayors and city council comments and reports on committee assignments. Uh, city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report.
Uh, city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, just a couple of things. Um, we have been placed on notice that the golf course hotel is getting ready to submit their plans and that they want to start construction in October. Yay.
Where's?
Yeah, this year, October this year.
Where's everybody at now?
I know. Not twenty four, not twenty forty. It did start in about two thousand and five, right? Um,
Could you just expand on that a little bit then? If you could.
I will bring our assistant city manager Trevin Barber back up because Trevin had a conversation with the hotel folks. Trevin, is there anything you'd like to add to, uh, stand upon that?
Um, thank you, uh, city manager, great house and council. Um, where our staff is very excited to work on this project. It's, it's not every day they get to work on a luxury hotel in one of the most beautiful cities in the world. So very happy to look at the plans, very excited to review them. Right now, uh, our understanding is that they have some survey work to do uh, in aligning some of the uh, um, the driveway and the egress on uh, McClure Way. And so we're excited to help them with that component of it and with some of the easements. And so right now, it's a lot of engineering. There's a lot of trying to make sure that the pieces fit. Um, but once we uh, receive the plans, we'll be ready to assist them and make sure that they're up and running as best we can.
Is the council going to be able to see the drawings or anything like that anytime soon that you know of? I don't know how much background you know.
Eventually, yes, but I don't have a, I don't have a, I don't have a firm date yet. They just, uh, they just wanted to call to give us a heads up and make sure that we can help coordinate. And uh, we are very excited to, to get that call. So that's where we are right now.
Okay. Uh, uh, council member Campbell, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem.
Just hoping uh, quarterly, monthly, yearly, you give a report about development projects. Once you see a tractor moving dirt, can you, in your report, when that comes, can you show that tractor so we can, it's been a thirty, thirty year window when we've been talking about it. But I would like to see the world to see that there's tractor moving dirt whenever that time is appropriate.
I'd be more than happy to bring that picture for you.
We're finally at this point. And this has been a, a, I don't know, who knows, right? Uh, when it closed down, four door closed down and then the original plan, right? So, uh, either you take ninety one or you take ninety four, right? But close to thirty something years plus, right? And we're finally here. And that's because of the hard work of this council and the councils before us and the city managers and, and our attorneys and our, and, and the other staff members, right? So we are very close because what I want to say is those are official conversations, official documents to move tractors, right? You know what I'm saying? Pulling those documents means I want to pull it, put a tractor up there. Does that make sense? You know, so we're finally there. I think we're going to see that pretty soon. So this is a good time. Thank you for uh, sharing the good news with, with us uh, here tonight. Thank you. Uh, city manager.
Thank you. Just a couple of other items. We have about seventy percent of the street signs have been replaced at this point, and the replacement Obama Way signs for the signs that were faded and, and bad are, are on their way. And then I ha, I'll end with kind of a little negative note. It's positive negative. Staff has been very, very vigilant at keeping the RVs moving from the Chili's lots and the different areas in the city. And you may have noticed that there's a very large, looks like a bus over there right now, brown looking vehicle. Uh, the police department has cited it numerous times. It's abandoned and we can't find anybody to tow it. So we are still in the process of finding someone to come and take that away. I just wanted the public to know that we are on it. We're vigilant. But um, tow companies don't want to take possession of those things. It costs them money. And that is my report.
But, but eventually it's going to be moved.
Yes.
Okay, that's. Uh, uh, council member Garcia.
Nothing to report, sir.
Councilman Wizard?
Sorry about that. A little sticky on the uh, unmute button. Um, today, we met, uh, community human services board of directors met. Having some trouble recruiting some folks, but otherwise uh, the program is working uh, well. Uh, we are going to soon be asked, you, excuse me, will be soon be asked to hear uh, to allow uh, the C H S uh, staff to make a presentation on Costa de Machu Picchu uh, and the incredible work that they're doing with the high rate of placement uh, and how they have an incredibly long waiting list. Uh, and it's just providing such an incredibly valuable service. Uh, so I'm, you know, thankful for this council's support of that uh, back in the day. And then um, we had an AMBAG meeting. Um, that was uh, you know, pretty perfunctory selecting new officers, that kind of stuff. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have a meeting tomorrow with the waste management district and a meeting at the end of the month with Monterey One Water. So uh, nothing to report there at this meeting. And then the um, mosquito abatement district meeting was canceled as well uh, because uh, our uh, general manager um, is president of the uh, mosquito district association group. And uh, he had a uh, conference to go to. So uh, anyway, well, um, I'll fill you in at the next meeting on, on uh, everything I can. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. I attended the seaside recreation and power basketball program. The young people seem to be having a really good time. Uh, they haven't played in a couple of years because of the COVID, but it's good to see uh, the parents and the kids interacting. Tended the uh, dog park committee and foster committee, uh, paternity dog park cleanup. Committee worked really well together. Uh, that park seems to be a very popular, one of Monterey County's finest. Uh, I tended the uh, Cypress Swim Club Regional Synchronized Meet. They had uh, teams there from Palo Alto to San Francisco to Walthamville to Santa Cruz. A lot of tourists came to the area at the, at the uh, meet, uh, hopefully spending the dollars and hotels in seaside. Um, I sent and I sponsored a small social with the help of Lisa Mitchell and hosted by uh, Deja Blue for, for councilman and school board member Helen Rucker. It was appreciation of all her hard work in promoting seaside and, and helping the youth move forward. And lastly, I wanted to uh, thank some park staff. I was a made aware of a situation where park staff went out of their way to uh, help a resident uh, near Fernando Park uh, that um, the residents and the uh, that they helped and the neighbors next to them were all very grateful and were, were um, similarly appreciative of their effort. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. The city attorney just uh, updated me on, um, they're supposed to be open, there will be open house for the new homes on the enclave, the model homes in March. So we look forward and we encourage the uh, residents to go out there and look at the model homes on, at the enclave sometime in March. Attended the mayor's association uh, meeting uh, went well. Uh, just continue to move our conversations and advocacy for uh, the city of Seaside, uh, during our monthly mayor's association. Uh, it went uh, well. Attended the uh, TMC rail committee. Uh, they continue to look forward to uh, again, get the uh, multimodal rail down the railway line between uh, Marina and uh, Sand City. That's going good. Uh, but the topic really was, uh, we reelected the uh, chair, um, uh, Michael Barr from uh, Key City to the, to the chair of the rail policy committee. Uh, attended a water master public awareness, uh, really focused on informing the public about uh, saltwater intrusion or possibilities in the seaside basin. Uh, we realized the, the main thing is a lot of leakage is coming from our basin over to the Monterey basin. And if we can encourage them to uh, stem the tide of their leakage, uh, that will slow down the vacuum underneath us. So we could put as much water as we can on top in our basin, but it's leaking over through the Monterey uh, basin. So uh, public awareness will keep, continue on that campaign. And then, um, attended uh, Cal Cities Revenue and Taxation Committee. Uh, the big concern there is uh, again, uh, local control and how the state has continued to talk about uh, holding our money, our tax dollars longer than what they should, uh, sending down unfunded mandates. So as a, a uh, a caucus within the uh, Cal Cities uh, organization, we're trying to figure out what will be our policy going forward over the next year to advocate for uh, more local control uh, uh, from cities. Uh, then Friday, attended the uh, Cal Cities, uh, I sit on two boards, two committees for Cal City. Second one is housing, community, economic development. And that came down to a big discussion about uh, SB nine and again, local control uh, and what it's doing to uh, small communities, uh, small and large. They're having the same effect that we're dealing with. And that was the major discussion. Uh, our next meeting will be on what is the definition for state, uh, for the cities within the state of California as we see it. What is local control? So we can talk with one voice when we're talking to the state legislature. I met with uh, Tanya uh, from the Blue Zone. Uh, we talked about the, the work that the Blue Zone is doing in the community, uh, the weekly uh, trash and, and, and rubbish pickup that they're doing with our other volunteers within the city. Uh, we also talked about uh, what would be uh, a significant uh, a transformative type of uh, what the Blue Zone is called a marquee project to really finish the transition through Blue Zone. Uh, adopt all the policies and then do the work that city manager is doing to make us a Blue Zone city. The completion of that is to have the city do some type of marquee project. And so the council is going to have to figure out what that looks like. My suggestion is, you know, some of the things we're already doing as it relates to um, fixing up a park or something like that, just something that's transformative. And we'll have more for the council as that gets closer. Uh, attended the um, the um, um, service for, um, and I'll talk about just a little bit later for on, uh, for um, Bill, Bill Elders, I want to call him Billy, really, you know, friends called him Billy. So attended his service, it was well attended. I, I think it, you know, everybody know he had a, a custom bike shop and I'll talk about that a little bit later. Uh, yes, uh, long, you know, born and raised here in seaside, so to speak, and a long time entrepreneur. Uh, attended the uh, paternity dog park planning cleanup, wonderful uh, with this uh, uh, with the uh, mayor Pro Tem there. Uh, added that discussion is, you know, how, as we move forward, how can we continue to assist the dog park with their uh, re, uh, rehabilitation, so to speak, of facelift, you know, investing more money in there as we're doing other parks. They, they just don't want to be left off the list, so to speak. Uh, let me see. Attended the uh, beach cleanup, seaside beach cleanup with the uh, uh, Kindness Rocks eight three one. They're doing a great job out there. Uh, clean up the beaches, a couple of people out there. And I think we did a great job cleaning up the beach that's uh, and seaside. Uh, attended the uh, pastor uh, M L Carter's twenty one, Attended the pastor, M L Carter's twenty one, twenty first year anniversary. Him and his, his wife anniversary, church anniversary, wonderful event. Again, a major player here in the community, always willing to do what he can for us here in seaside. Like the mayor pro Tim said, he was a catalyst in the recognition of Mrs. Rucker here on Tuesday. Had the honor of seeing that and participating in that. And, and, and the group for Walder Fangs presented her with a star. I presented her with the mayor's key to the city for her longevity and the things she's done in this community. Some people forget she came here in nineteen sixty four as a teacher. So she's been running since nineteen sixty four. And if she didn't have a walker, she probably would have ran out of Deja Blue. But she was looking good. She was doing good. So we should be happy that for the last fifty eight years, Mrs. Rucker has been in our community. And so I thank the mayor pro Tim for putting that together. And then that's, I think that's it. I think that's it. Okay, so city attorney, no, we're going to do the, we're going to close the memory before we go to a closed session. Okay. And some of you may know these individuals. If there's any council person that want to speak on, on any of these individuals, feel free. This Dexter Barnett Jr., just a young, beautiful man that was, life was cut short through what I call senseless violence. And it's just a terrible tragedy for this community. And, and I believe two kids that he left behind and a loving family and extended family. And we just want to make sure that the family knows that the, the rest of the residents are heart stricken at this time also. Because of their loss and because of a life cut so short and so much promise. And, you know, what we have to do here is just continue to do our best to make sure we do all we can. So people here can just live out their best lives. And I know we all agree with that. Again, Billy Elders, Bill Elders, Billy Elders. Just, you know, what I know from him is, you know, he came here, you know, I think in the high school age with his parents and they loved the place. He stayed here. And I think at the age of twenty three, he started his custom bike shop. And so that's why I'm talking about the entrepreneur. And that was back in, I forget when it was. But he was twenty three and, and, and so that was at least four to five decades ago. And he's been a community member, a community leader. And the things that he's done for this community cannot be overstated. And his funeral was well attended. As you guys know, he's a custom bike, a fabricator and a biker. And I think it had at least be two hundred bikes and bikers that came to his funeral. And the rest of us drove a car. So at least three hundred people there. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
Just on him. Like you mentioned, that he was a longtime seaside resident, seaside business owner, very invested in his business. But beyond that, at least twice a year, as I recall, he did bike runs for kids and collecting toys for kids. With a wide range of things. And he also participated in, back in the day, city events with bringing motorcycles to city events and showcasing them on the lawn. And creating a lot of energy for those events. It was kind of fun to see fifty, hundred motorcycles on the lawn in the city hall. And just was very positive attitude and active in the community as it relates to his bicycle family. And the overall family just saw a lot of good positive comments about it. Thank you.
No, wonderful. It's just, you know, someone like that being successful a long time in that custom bike, he could have had a shop anywhere. You know, he could have moved anytime to any city in this region if he wanted to. But he wanted to make his stand here in seaside and had the honor of, of knowing him. And so, again, we extend our condolences to the family. Next is Judy Courier Fletcher, a true friend. Wasn't a seaside resident, but I've met her, I don't know, maybe about twenty years ago and just the best of friends, as nice as woman you would ever know. And and I was thinking about something about her and I was thinking about, you ever hear about people saying that when you're talking to that person, you feel like you're the only person in the world? That's the type of lady she was. That's how she would make you feel. And I just extend my condolences to her, Bob, her husband and her family and her loved ones. She would truly be missed. And again, our condolences to the family. So, you know, all too often we're, we're doing this, but I, I try to do these things because I, I want their names to be in the record books. You know, that's what we can control up here. So if there's anybody that you guys know, that's what this is about. It's not, you know, all right. So with that, we will move on. We thank the city clerk for providing that slide and honoring those people for us. Thank you, city clerk. City attorney, would you read us in a closed session, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Council will meet in closed session pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six to have a conference with labor negotiators. Employee organizations are all of them. Agency negotiators are, are Roberta Greathouse, acting city manager and Donna, Donna Williamson and Heather Kaufman. Council will further have conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine, one matter of existing litigation. Petrovich Development Company versus City of Seaside et al., United States District Court, Northern District of San Jose, court case number twenty one C V zero seven seven nine seven dash N C. I do expect an announcement coming out of that item. Council will also meet with legal counsel pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point, or five four nine five six point nine. One matter of existing litigation committee for sound water and land development of Port Ord versus City of Seaside et al. Sixth District Court of Appeal case number H zero four nine zero three one. And finally, the council will have conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine on one matter of potential litigation. That concludes my reading.
Public comment is now open on our closed session items.
Members of the public wishing to make public comment, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling in from a phone. Mayor, no members of the public have indicated they wish to make public comment.
Public comment is still open on our closed session items.
Mayor, no members of the public have indicated they wish to make public comment.
Public comment is closed. We will go into closed session.
There have been no further business, the speed is adjourned.
Conference with from the negotiators on the negotiations. Item B council also had accounts conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine on one matter of existing litigation. This would be the Petrovich development company versus city of seaside in U S district court. And the announcement announcement coming out of that briefing is that the district court has granted the city's motion to dismiss this case from federal court. And that's where that case is. So I want to make sure that the public was aware that the city's motion to dismiss that case was granted. Conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine on one matter of existing litigation, that would be the committee. That's a case that is pending in the sixth district court of appeal. Council received a briefing on that matter. And finally, on one matter of potential litigation, the council received a briefing on that matter as well. And there is nothing to report on those two additional items. And that concludes my read in.
There have been no further business, the speed is adjourned.